Good afternoon. It is 1:08. Today is January the 25th, 2022. I'll call the Lubbock City Council to order a work session this afternoon. It's our second meeting in the month of January. Glad you guys are all here. We welcome folks in the council chambers as well as those that might be watching us via the World Wide Web or via City of Lubbock TV. We've got a full afternoon of work session items followed by our regular session or regular meeting this evening at 5:00. We'll start this afternoon with looking at our city council goals. We will then, following that, we'll get a report from the Director of Electric Utilities, or in this case, his designee. It will be something we've seen before, but it's just another opportunity to look at it. It's a truncated presentation from what was done at last week's Electric Utility Board meeting. Following that, we will continue our discussions around American Rescue Plan, and then we will wrap up with the City Council's Street Bond follow-up discussion. So for, I think, pretty meaty topics, we've blocked two and a half hours for these, total for these discussions. I'll try to keep us, do our best to keep us within those timeframes. Item 2-1 is to discuss planning goals and budget priorities for the Lubbock City Council and the City of Lubbock. I'm going to turn this over to the City Manager in a minute, but I hope you guys had a chance to briefly review this presentation earlier this morning. In some ways, I think it's, to this council, it's, "City Council, here's your life." It's a really interesting look back at the last six years. And Mr. Atkinson's done a nice job of, I think, with some help from his team, of defining, reminding us what those priorities were, and then talking about the progress made towards those priorities. I think it's, you know, you might say, "Well, why now? We normally do this in the fall." Well, we, in the fall, we had a bond election in November. It didn't turn out as some had hoped. We found ourselves right in the middle of redistricting, and we felt like it would be best to wait till the spring. We'll see the new council later this year. The interesting thing about the timing of the city business is such that the first thing that new council will really deal with is a budget. And it's important that, and it would be actually, we would not be doing our job if we were not, if we didn't take the opportunity to give staff direction. Those budget meetings begin soon. I'm sure the City Manager will talk about that. So that's really what we'll be doing today. Won't be as deep a dive as we've done in the past, but I think Mr. Atkinson's done a nice job of framing this discussion. And so, with no further ado, I'll call item 2-1 and ask Mr. Atkinson to take it away. Jared?
Thank you, Mayor. City Council. Mayor's excellent lead-in. I was going to maybe title this "A Trip Down Memory Lane." So with the council's permission, I'll go ahead and get started. We'll get to the end, and as we usually do, we'll kick it over for y'all's input and guidance.
Mr. Atkinson, before you, I think it's important to note, there was no citizen sign up for citizen comment. I moved past item 2-1. I should have said that for the record, but no one signed up for citizen comments. Okay. My apologies.
Good deal. Good deal. So, by way of recollection, the City Council began the effort to have clearly stated priorities beginning in 2016. It was done again in 2017, '18, '19, 2020. Note that we didn't do it in 2021, as the mayor explained. 2020 was a little unique, and that was the year that we established what I would call "council work tasks," and certainly one of those resulted in the bond proposition that was up in November. So we'll cover those. As we jump into this, I think staff and I were putting this together. You know, the thing that really comes to me is how consistent the priorities have been, which I would suggest also helps us be consistent in having results. There are certainly changes over the years as the council adjusted and adapted, but you're still going to see more similarity than difference. So what did council say in 2016? Budget, communications, neighborhoods, governance, building services, economic development, and redevelopment. I think you'll notice that budget, communication, neighborhood, some version of building services, some version of economic development, redevelopment to include North and East Lubbock. You'll see that be very consistent over time. Jump into the immediate following year, 2017. Budget, communication, neighborhoods, governance, economic development, redevelopment, still with North and East Lubbock as a focus. We added wellness and health, and that was both at the community level, and it was at the city level. So that one appears this year. We made some strides towards that. You'll see it becomes kind of an included item as we go forward. 2018, sounds a lot alike. Budget, communications, neighborhoods, governance, development services. Prior, we had building services. Economic development and redevelopment to include North and East Lubbock. 2019, council, if you'll recall, that was the year that we had the multi-day workshop. It was quite an excellent time. You should all still have your two series of the three-ring binders that were put together for that. Outcome at the end of, excuse me? I'm sorry, sir. Do you need an additional copy?
He wants to know when he gets to do that again. That's what he wants to know.
I would say that's at the council's call, but it's likely not on the agenda today. 2019. Budget has changed to fiscal discipline. Would remind you, if you go back and look at the detail of each of those six bullets, they all have sub-bullets underneath them originally. Fiscal discipline was always number one under budget. So really, a change of terminology was not a change of focus. Council's been very consistent with this. Communications, community improvement, public safety, which had been a sub-bullet previously, now pulls up and stands on its own. Growth and development, economic development, redevelopment to include North and East Lubbock. 2020. So this was the first time we had a break from what was then the new pandemic. We met late in 2020. Fiscal discipline, communications, community improvement, public safety, growth and development, economic development, redevelopment, still with a focus also on North and East Lubbock. 2020 is when we added what we would call the council tasks. One of those was to review and to revise the Gateway Street Fund program. Council, that's done, and that has been completed. The main focus on changing the Gateway program was to enhance and probably could say to clarify the availability of the use of dollars under that program for your interior areas of the city. One of the work tasks was to consider a charter review and potential amendments. That was accomplished. You had a review committee, did excellent work, ultimately decided not to push forward for amendment, but the work task was done, and that information is there. Work tasks that came out of the 2020 was the creation of a Future Needs Committee. That was a committee that went to work in December of 2020 and worked just practically nonstop through the following August. That was chaired by Mr. Griffith, Councilmember Griffith, supported by councilmembers Patterson, Harris, and Joy. The tasks that were assigned to the Future Needs Committee? Look at and study the Civic Center renovation project. Council's Facilities Committee had prior engaged in a study effort and a group of estimates of projects. Future Needs Committee looked at those. Fire Station 20. That was identified by Chief Fogerson when we did the actual planning session. That fell to Future Needs to work on. The residential dirt street program, I'll talk about that a little more because that has progressed through time, but I would say it really hit its high point as a result of the council's work last year. Future Needs Committee was also tasked to look at the thoroughfare streets and funding opportunities for those. That, of course, is what became the November bond proposition. I think it's really important to note, that's a follow-up to the work that was done by the Streets Committee. What I think from this diocese has been termed "The Roads Scholars," Councilmember Griffith, Councilmember Chitus, Councilmember Christian. Their claim to fame, Mayor and council, is they... Their claim to fame and really what put the Future Needs Committee on the path to do the work they did is that Streets Committee drove every street inside Lubbock. All 135 square miles were covered, produced a very large listing, a priority listing, and that was what Future Needs worked on as they moved forward. Council, the next sequence of slides, I just want to go back and talk a little bit about what were the outcomes of all of these efforts over the years. If we start with budget and fiscal discipline, as I joined the city late in 2016, council had these priorities adopted. This council made it very plain. This was the first one to go to work on and to do so immediately. I would suggest one of the largest changes that was made was a very quick, a very immediate shift to pay-as-you-go for operational expenditures. That caused a little pain over the years, but I think we're reaping the benefits of that now, so we did that. At the time, the city had what was known as the Master Lease Program. That's a form of capital leasing, not traditional capital leasing, but similar. And we were tasked to find a way to not do that going forward and to eliminate the part of that that was outstanding, which was quite significant. The two big-ticket items that you commonly saw in the Master Lease Program were your light and your heavy-duty fleet, and then information technology, both the equipment behind the walls, the magic servers, and the firewalls and all that, but really all the way to our desks with the end-user equipment were being financed on the Master Lease Program. Beginning with that first budget year, there was never another dollar put on the Master Lease Program. That is the year, council, we presented you with a five-year program to completely take out what was already on the Master Lease Program. Council, you finished that last step for us last June, so that program's gone. One of the next ones we took on, a little more esoteric when you talk about it up here, but long-term, it's huge for the city, that was to establish your water and your wastewater fund with its own credit rating. So we all know, if you go to some of the state resources that are available and you look at debt structure for cities, you will see Lubbock stands way up at the top of the list, and that's not the list you want to be on the top of. That list is for general obligation debt, debt that is either paid for by the general fund or has been, let's call it cosigned, by the general fund. Vast majority of the City of Lubbock's debt is actually water and wastewater. It's Lake Allen Henry. It's the South Water Treatment Plant. It's the Northwest Wastewater Treatment Plant. It's those things. But they showed up on your general obligation debt, not because they were paid by the general fund, they were not, never were, but because they were cosigned by the general fund. You get yourself out of that by establishing the credit for its own system, what's often called revenue debt, self-supporting debt. We were able to do that. A brand-new water-wastewater credit rating was issued at AA- minus, and we've actually been able to increase it slightly, and we did that during 2020, the pandemic year. Short version, future issuances that are paid for by the water-wastewater system are issued on the water-wastewater system credit. It's a revenue debt, it's not general obligation. We also then gained the ability, as we've been able to do refinancings over these last few years with the very, very low interest rates, if we're able to refinance an existing revenue debt, we can pull it out from under the general obligation. So we've been able to do that. We've enhanced your investment policy and the return on the investments just because of the sheer size of the operation of the City of Lubbock, the various funds and the reserves, all those require us to hold dollars. But it's our job, within the limits of public funds investment, to get as much money back on those as we can, and I think we've done a good job of that. Talked about refinancing prior debt. We do that to save money. We do that to move things out of general obligation that don't need to be there. Council reminder, all of those that come into you are done on the basis of we do not extend the term. So if we're able to refinance something at a seven-year call or a 14-year call, it doesn't re-extend back out to '20. We just pick up what's left and keep going. Revised budget process and budget presentation, these are those sometimes lengthy workshops everybody enjoys at the end of July, 1st of August. We're proud of that process. We think it really puts everything up for the public to see. We implemented departmental performance measures. Your health plan underwent a substantial revision, and as part of fiscal discipline, the move to take street maintenance entirely to cash. In prior years, some cash, some debt, often a structure consisting of both, you're now at $11 million all cash. So you're at a high mark, at a high mark with cash. Communications. Council, we went through the process to create a completely new city website. If you go to mylubbock.us today, that's what you'll see. The 3-1-1 system has been enhanced, and one of the very simple, but really a beneficial thing for the 3-1-1 system was extending its hours 30 minutes up in the morning and 30 minutes late in the evening. That's helped. Now, I would note, because of the very next item, the MyLBK app, what we sometimes call "See, Click, Fix," we're actually seeing a tremendous drop in the traffic now that comes into 3-1-1. The MyLBK is 24 hours a day, and it's right where you are all the time, so we may look at that in the future. Council, we added what's known as the LBK Alert program. Remember that this is both an emergency notification program, and it can be used if the subscriber chooses for general notification. When the police department is doing accident follow-up, when the parks department's closing a street because of an event, all those things can go through the LBK Alert. Channel 2 and the video-on-demand system have both been upgraded. Our social media presence, number one, has been coordinated, and number two, it's been greatly enhanced. And we showed you a year ago some statistics that we ran out through the COVID year. Social media is our number-one way right now to generate traffic and information out to the public. Members of the City Council and certainly the mayor have continued to hold town halls, coffee with the mayor. We do have a coffee with the mayor scheduled for tomorrow morning. It'll be nice and chilly, but we think the roads will be okay. Council, you funded for us the Lubbock 101 Citizens Academy. Now, remember, we had to put that on pause in 2020, and we had to keep it on pause in 2021. One week ago, we reopened it. So we have gone back to our 2020 members. They have the first shot at taking one of those spots, and by the end of this week, we'll know which ones are able to, and then we'll open it up to the public. We're excited to get that program going again, and it looks like we're going to have half or better of the folks that wanted to do it in 2020 that are going to go ahead and do it for us this year. Your emergency management program, we took it as a task to really enhance the public information, the outreach that comes out for events like that. If you've been on our social media today, you'll see that we're already pushing out all the winter weather prep that will go on. Neighborhoods, community improvement, I've tried to hold each of these topics to a single page. Council, I think y'all could help us fill these out multiple each, but we'll stay on one. You know, one that we're really proud of is the program to take residential dirt streets and convert those into paved streets. So these are older areas, they're homes that have always been on a dirt street, and without this program, they didn't have a path to get on a paved street. Council, you created and funded this in year one with $400,000 out of the general fund. All but one year, we've been able to also leverage community development funding dollars into the program. We've averaged between $800,000 and $1 million a year to go into the program, so the leverage has been really good. And of course, this council funded $9 million in mid-2021 and did that through a certificate of obligation. So it's a great program. It's starting to make a difference. It still has a ways to go, but you will remember the seed money that we put in your budget each year. We actually have set aside inside of a parks account so that we don't lose that and it doesn't disappear into the budget. Creation, and I call it full funding because the first year we weren't able to fully fund it, is the North and East Lubbock Infrastructure Fund, or NILIF. In its simplest terms, those are local dollars that can go directly to assist homeowners in the target area. Importantly, this hits homeowners who, for one reason or another, may not be able to get ahold of community development block grant dollars. That program has been fully subscribed each and every year. Karen Murphy and her team have just really taken that as their own and done well. East Lubbock, Market Lubbock, Inc., Grant Program. We've had two major citywide plans, ones that's finished and being implemented, one that will soon wrap up, that have strong focus on neighborhoods, your Plan Lubbock 2040 or the Comprehensive Plan, and of course, the Parks Master Plan. We've been able to add in-house a neighborhood planner who's sole focus. In fact, I think I saw him walk in today. Public Health, substance abuse, excuse me, substance abuse programming services and funding. We are doing that at a higher level than has ever been done, and that includes Ms. Wells and her team stepping in when the state contractors who had previously provided this were not able to do so going forward. She's been able to find providers and pick that up. Community Development, Code Enforcement, Solid Waste, we have targeted programs in all of those, really focused on neighborhoods and community improvement. Governance. Council Rules, Recurring Review. Council, you completed that at your most recent council meeting, and when you look at your agenda today, one of the results of that, as far as how we do zone cases, you'll see. City Secretary's Office put tremendous work into revising how the boards and commissions work, how appointments are made, how candidates are staged, and that's moving forward. We put transparency under governance. You could put these into a lot of different categories. We've already talked about the different budget presentations. We have now the single-sheet combined debt reporting that we're able to issue each year, what we colloquially call the one-pager. It's actually a front and back, but it consolidates all those questions that you're asked about the city's debt positions in one place, and it's kept updated. Mr. Kostelich and her team and his team moved to the Popular Annual Financial, he's not here today, so unless he's watching, I'm not in too bad of trouble. Popular Annual Financial Report, and of course, its favorite acronym, the PAFR. This takes what council knows as the CAFR, the Consolidated Annual Financial Report, and I'm giving you a preview of what's coming up when you get your audit this year. It's no longer the CAFR, it's now the ACFR. So you're going to move from Consolidated Annual Financial Report to the Annual Consolidated Financial Report. And yes, that took an act of Gatsby to make happen governmental accounting standards. We've been, we've had three annual issuances of that Popular Annual Financial Report, and as soon as the ACFR is completed, you'll have your fourth. So that's also for folks that are very interested in your finances but does not really want to look through a 400-page document. This is the way to look at it. Council, your fund model presentations are done differently as a result of trying to have that open, transparent presentation to the public. Usually, we're starting into those about this time of year. I think they're going to be pushed off a little this year, but they will all be out there, fund by fund, which shows you operational expenses, it shows debt service, it shows how your reserves are calculated, what's available to reinvest. Moving on to public safety. $60 million Public Safety Improvement Project. This built three patrol division stations. All three of those are open. We have the new municipal court, that's immediately west of where we sit today. Still projected to open first quarter of 2022. It's catching some of the same supply chain issues that we're getting. We have the new police headquarters in 2023, property evidence and crime lab facility, which will be very much needed, and we're excited to get it moving. Council, prior, city councils, prior administrations put a great focus on enhancing what's known as the ISO rating, your community protection rating through your fire department. Over the last few years, we've achieved the ISO-1 rating. That's the highest rating available in the country. That saves homeowners money on their insurance, same thing with business owners. We've kept that maintained, and a big piece of continuing to maintain, it's right underneath there with Fire Station 20. Council, you also funded that for us. The land has been secured. It is under design, and in fact, you have the agreement on the agenda later today that divides what part of the adjacent streets and so forth the city's responsible for. Went ahead and relisted the LBK Alert Outdoor Warning System, so here's your quick update on that. If you'll recall, the one thing that was missing were the 50-foot poles that hold up the sirens. Those are here. If you were out at the EOC today, they are all sitting out, laid up on big sawhorses as they build those. Lubbock Power and Light is helping install those, and they're, again, based on weather, they were to begin going in the ground tomorrow. So that's coming. We'll have that second quarter of 2022, and that system will be fully functional. So I'm proud of that one. We've added, over the last six years, new Emergency Operations Center. We've enhanced emergency management operations. I think it's important not to forget that public health is a big part of public safety. That operation has grown by leaps and bounds. Big thanks to the County Commissioners Court for their vote to push us into kind of having a joint city-county operation, and of course, this council's already secured the location for that. It's funded, and it is under design as well. So big strides moving there. Growth and Development. We've reorganized all of those departments, the Division of Duty. If you look into the sub-bullets in prior years, council calls out more than once what we term the "one-stop-shop." That's here. It's right back behind your shoulders. Today, it's open and available, as well as a very strong shift to online service availability. You can call for inspections, you can schedule inspections, take permits, you can do all kinds of stuff online now if you want to. We've added performance measures for the time that we hold ourselves to, to process permits. We've established strong outreach with our local home builders and developers council. Again, your citywide plans influence these operations as well. You've got the Comprehensive Plan. We've completed the Impact Fee Program. That was a direct output. The Unified Development Code is under development, also a direct output, and the Comprehensive, the future land use plans and the associated zones are all a part of that. Put another call-out in there to street maintenance. Economic Development and Redevelopment. Again, the East Lubbock Grant Program, the Downtown Grant Program. Council, we have on staff now business development and grant writers. Those are in-house and here. North and East Lubbock Infrastructure Fund, again, the plans. I'll call out just three of the announcement, or two of the announcements that have been made this year on major economic development projects. You have the major La Prino Foods and the two different Amazon facilities. The two Amazon facilities are up and running. La Prino is still on schedule for a groundbreaking early this summer, so those are moving and moving quickly. I throw this last in just to talk about the growth of the city and really the very, very blessed state that we're in right now. 2020, what we call the COVID year, we issued 1,829 permits to build a new single-family home. That was a 37% increase year over year. That was an all-time record. 2021, that number jumped to 2,428. So a record on top of a record, a 33% increase over the prior record. Council, this, your city, and you know it well, is just going, going good. That'll conclude kind of the prepared remarks. Let's talk about the next steps, kind of the council input. I'm going to restate here where we came out of the end of 2020 with your current priorities. Fiscal discipline, communication, community improvement, public safety, growth and development, economic development, redevelopment to include North and East Lubbock. As the mayor noted, the budget's moving. My part of it will actually start March the 1st, so we're going to take off and go down the path. These priorities, they help guide us as we put the budget together, and of course, the budget is the work plan for the city. That's that one time of year, everything is on the table all at the same time, and it tells us where we're going next year, what it's going to cost, and how to do it. Council, would ask for your thoughts. Do you wish to affirm, possibly to modify, the current priorities? As the mayor noted, certainly this can be changed today by current councils, it can be changed by future councils before a budget is completed. But we are ready to start, and would certainly appreciate your input. Mayor, I'll hand it back over.
Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Well done, very comprehensive. And council, I think you'll agree, that was a nice summary. I'll open the floor for a discussion about, maybe we'd slide back a page, Mr. Atkinson? Yeah, thank you. For discussion about these priorities, shall we move forward with the same set of priorities? If not, how would you like to modify these? And so I'll open the floor, and who would like to go first? Ms. Joy?
Well, I tried to figure out where we really had health as a priority. Well, I tried to figure out where we really had health as a priority, and if we don't know today how important that piece of our city has been, then somebody's been asleep, I think we need to add that. I don't think we will ever be the same again. And with contemplation that the county might join us in that effort, I think we need to put health, and under health, that's everything from physical health to substance abuse, all of it. And I just think that it is a piece of our community that was lacking. Fortunately for the city of Lubbock, we at least had in place a really good director and had beefed up our staff at the Health Department, so that we were able to not just weather COVID, but to actually be a contributor in helping people find what they needed. So I would like to see us to add health in all of its aspects, I think this is the time that we do that.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Other comments? Mr. Massengill?
Thank you, Mayor. I think Ms. Joy makes a good point that we'll never look at public health the same again, and we also understand how important it is to our communities, especially locally. I think under growth and development, I think I would like us to see infrastructure emphasized on that, I think we'll even talk about some of that today, transportation infrastructure, but as noted, as Mr. Atkinson noted, we've got, really, our growth has just really been exceptional over the past few years, and we've got to make sure we have the infrastructure in place to keep up with it.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill. Other comments? Mr. Griffith?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with both the previous comments. I would, however, like to move, my recommendation is to move, public safety to top of the As Mr. Atkinson went through a lot of these years and things we've done, communications obviously have improved, community improvement has improved, physical discipline has improved, and I believe public safety's improved as I looked at new data just yesterday. But the point is, I think that should be the top priority as our city continues to grow. I believe, but, and to Ms. Joy's point, the Health Department, whether that's labeled separately, and probably should be, but I think public safety should be number one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Other comments? Mr. Christian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a few comments. Go back to communications, and I thought it was a good information that Mr. Atkinson gave us about the methods of which we were using to communicate to those people, primarily, you know, internet, social media is, we all know what it's all about. But I just want us to think about this in regards to that generation that's probably, that may not be as techno-savvy as other folks below a certain age. I think we need to look at other ways that we try to reach those people that are seniors, you know, baby boomers and such like that, a lot of them use that, but I think we need to look at some other formats or platforms and make sure that we don't leave anyone behind. And then also, there's still folks that may not have the kind of access to that, those platforms and internet service to be able to find out what's going on and how we can communicate to them. Other than that, I thought that's a, and I agree what's been said about the Health Department, I think it's right on, I think it's perfectly said, that we'll probably never look at health the way we did in two or three years ago than we do today. It's finally important that we have provided our citizens the services, and I'm sure some services that Ms. Wells has already thought about that are not even a part of our Health Department. I think it says a lot about a city that they take that very seriously. So any way that we can improve that, and I, and once again, our senior population, I'm just not, not quite adverse of what kind of programs we have with seniors under the Health Department, other than our, our community seniors' centers. So I'd really like to maybe have Ms. Wells do a review of what we do with that population, what we provide that population through our Health Department. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Christian, I might note that you make, those points are well-made about communications. You are one baby boomer, a wonder boomer, I believe, who completely understands social media, to, you know, my best of my knowledge, might note that. Okay, I'll, I'll accept that.
Yeah, okay, good.
Other comments, council? Mr. Chaddis?
Thank you, Mayor. More of a statement than anything else. I was looking at the previous single-family residential permits, you know, two years in a row, we set records, brings me to economic development, North and East Lubbock, growth and development, again, I keep thinking North and East Lubbock, and I wonder why I do that. You know, this, this is great, rooftops, rooftops. You know, we've got some monies, ARPA's, if I'm out of order here, I could understand, you know, there's some ARPA monies that are coming available, you know, again, for the public information, monies are coming. You start making phone calls, or getting all your ducks in a row to where you can qualify for some of that money. Again, community development, Ms. Murphy's doing an excellent job out there. If there's money available, good door to be knocking on. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chaddis. Ms. Patterson-Harris, you have comments? You good? Notably quiet, I'm just making sure that you're okay. Okay, I think, I think that's, we've given Mr. Atkinson some good feedback there, he can, I think he can, I'll let him summarize that, then I'll make a, make a couple of final comments. Jared?
Okay, council, thank you. What I'm going to say for the changes first is take public safety and move it to the top, so the position that's been occupied by fiscal discipline or budget. Keep all the other priorities, but let's call out, today, public health is under public safety, but let's call that out and make it a standalone. So we'll go from six major bullets to seven. All the other items mentioned, good input and are included, just not as a standalone deal. So we'll have seven, I'll get back to you on the 8th with your new list.
If you, on the public, I think on, and you do a good job wordsmithing this, but it's more than just public health, I think, it was implied by what Ms. Joy had to say, it's wellness for our employees, it's for the community, it's, and so, you can figure that one out, but, yeah, that's what, that's implied, and I think it's certainly.
Absolutely, it's both looking at the 2,400 people that work for the city of Lubbock and provide service to our residents, but it's looking at the community itself. Councilman Christian's been a champion of our substance abuse programs, those continue to grow, you know, we're going to talk about homelessness a bit when we get back into ARPA, that is part and parcel of it. One of the big shifts that we're starting to see as, as funding is becoming available is the connection of public health really being part and parcel of parks and recreation, of your neighborhoods, and in fact, some of that funding that comes through public health now, new dollars, is specifically targeted at that level, and for those that are helping us on our neighborhood planning efforts, you've had kind of a sneak peek into that, so, yes, sir, we'll, we'll set it up both.
Great, thank you. Ms. Patterson-Harris?
I just, since Mr. Atkinson brought that up, I think it's very important that we note, even though we've had to deal with COVID over the past, what we're entering in two years, prior to COVID, there were health issues that needed attention in this city, and I appreciate the fact that COVID brought attention to it, but there have been issues at so many levels, health-wise, for individuals within the community, prenatal care, all those types of things that people have to deal with, and so, I just, I appreciate the fact that you brought that point to the forefront and that we look at encapsulating everything that citizens have to contend with as it relates to their health, mental, physical, social. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. Yeah, I would conclude by, by thanking first the council for, for your leadership in this area. You've made, you've remained consistent, the message has not changed, I think that means that staff has been able to work with that. I, you know, it's, you can go into any of these, and as Mr. Atkinson did, you could go to one level, you could even go to a further, even a much, much deeper level, and there's a lot that's been accomplished, and I think, I'm thankful first to, to council, I'm thankful for senior staff and their willingness to, to partner with the council, to make certain that, that we make these changes work. And then, I think most importantly, I'm thankful for the men and women who, you know, have their paychecks signed by Mr. Atkinson on the bottom right and have City of Lubbock on them, they're the ones that really did this work and continue to do this work. And I can remember some discussions when we started talking about not leasing everything, what was that, what that was going to mean, not just with senior staff, but with some of you have a lot of operational experience, or, excuse me, responsibilities, and, and your willingness to toe the line for a few years, to find ways to say no, to fund needs and not wants, has put us in a position today that's, I think, I believe is enviable. We have flexibility to address what's, what we need to do, and you saw that in the budget that we passed earlier this year, where we're able to, to address the requirements to, around labor and around what we'd seen from inflation, what the market was doing, and making certain that our employees were, were put first and foremost in that budget, whether it be a much-needed increase for our police, or the fact that their frontline employees and often even their supervisors received the highest raises at 7% in many cases, and so, you know, you don't do that unless you've built discipline into your process, which gives you flexibility to act. So, I could go on, but I'm thankful, I'm thankful for a council that has stayed the course, and for our city leadership and the rank and file, our men and women who, who every day go to work for the good people of Lubbock and, and take care of business. You know, this doesn't happen without you guys. We can talk all we want to, but if we don't move forward as a team, it doesn't work. And so I think on behalf, I don't, I don't have to ask the council on this one, on behalf of the council, a heartfelt thank you to each of you. There's work that remains to be done, and we know that, you know, we know we'll stand up the EOC tonight, that many of you will be with your teams, prepared to address our roads and, and anything else that might happen for winter weather, and then when the sun comes up on Thursday morning, we'll be back doing what we do every day. So, thank you to each of you for that. Ms. Joy?
I just wanted to add about three things. One is, we get the calls from citizens, and we all know that people say in social media things they wouldn't say to your face, but when we get those calls, the first thing I tell them is, "I appreciate your call, but I know who to call because our staff does the work, and you guys do. You're quick to respond, and I know you take a lot of heat and a lot of ugly words sometimes, and for that, I apologize on behalf of people who don't know how to behave." Second thing, I would be interested, Mr. Atkinson, in knowing on the refinances that we've done, how much interest we have, we have saved the citizens of Lubbock over the period of time, I guess you're talking about 2016 to the present. And the final thing I'm going to say is that the master lease was not a lease. It was never a lease, and I recall the night that the gentleman from the bank got up at the podium, not this one, but the one over at the old city hall, and was asked that question, "Isn't this really a note?" And he stumbled around for quite a while, because what we were doing, we were buying items, we were buying them, we were getting the money from the bank, and they were holding the title, just like if you go buy a car, it's your car, but the bank's got the title, and you got to pay the note. So, I can't let that go without saying, and I will even say, there are a few people on this dais today, when they first came on council, thought we were leasing things, literally, having somebody else buy them, and we were leasing them. So, that I am most proud of, for all of the people who worked on that, to stop using that as a credit card. So, thanks to all of you, and keep up the good work.
I would have been taken back if Ms. Joy had not talked about the, the master lease, so I'm glad that we got that, yeah, okay.
Oh, it was over $40 million, by the way.
Yeah, I remember.
It wasn't a small amount of money.
I remember very well, actually. Okay. Mr. Atkinson, anything else on that one?
No, sir, thank you all for your input.
Council, thank you very much. Okay, item 22 is to hear the update from LPNL that we talked about, that I mentioned a moment ago, and Mr. McCullough has sent his designee today.
Last designee standing.
Jamie, we're, Jamie, we're glad you're here.
Thank you.
We're used to seeing you talk more about the customer service side of things, but we, we know that this is something you can, can present to us. We, we also realize that you don't probably have the nuanced, detailed backup data that we expect Mr. McCullough to have, and we're not going to run you through the wringer today, I can promise you that. We recognize the fact that you're standing in for him, and that this council has had, I think, this will be the third opportunity to look at these, a version of these very slides, so we'll let you take it away, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. So, as the mayor said, I'm really here just to give you all a quick overview of what we have learned recently regarding LPNL as the provider of last resort. Again, I'll try to be as brief as possible, not get into too many details, but want to make sure that everybody's questions are answered as well. So, a couple of the things that I really want to point out is the less than 1% of the ERCOT customers that are served by pollers, so again, it's a very, very small amount. We're going to be talking about LSPs, or large service providers, which are pollers that provide cost-plus rates, as well as V-reps, or voluntary retail electric providers, and they provide market-based rates. We also look to Sheriland in their entry into the ERCOT market back in 2014, and how they use default rep retail electric providers instead, and that as guidance for us as we look to move into the ERCOT market.
I just want to mention, just Sheriland, we look at Sheriland because of it being the largest group of clients that went into ERCOT.
And the most recent, really, back in 2014.
There's some things about that Sheriland experience after the fact that we, we'll work hard to, in fact, we've already built things in to not, to not follow, certainly, so I don't want people to think that, you know, we're, everything... So I don't want people to think that, you know, everything they did, we believe everything they did is the right way to do it, but it's a good, it's a very good reference for we look at interest into ERCOT. Thank you. Please continue, Ms. Joy.
And they really did have a lot of good lessons learned, so we can learn from their mistakes. To go over a couple of different definitions, I've got, we talked about the LSP and the VREP. EZID, this is another one. This is the electric service identifier. This is really the key piece of information. It's linked to each electric meter and that's used to identify basically everything within the ERCOT market, from a retailer to a TDU to ERCOT itself. So really, how a customer ends up on a Polar is through the process of a mass transition, which again, doesn't happen very often, but it's when a retail electric provider ends up defaulting. So first what happens is these customers are then assigned to the voluntary retail providers. These voluntary retail electric providers, again, these are market-based rates. If there is any remaining customers left over, they'll be assigned to the large service So really, what's a market-based product? Market-based products, they're offering a month-to-month product that either is the same to, is the same, it matches what a non-Polar customer is receiving at the same time, without any penalty or additional fee should they choose to switch out of the Polar. Now, the large service providers, they're cost-plus. They're taking all of the TDU charges, adding in the six cents per kilowatt hours. And this energy charge that they're charging their customers, it needs to be the average of the real-time settlement price point. And again, one of the more recent changes is to make sure that in no instance, the LSP energy charge exceeds the 120% of the previous year's LSP energy charge. So last year, we had about 5 million transactions in the ERCOT market. The majority, as you can see, it's like, I guess we'll call it blue, they're move-ins. And it's then followed by a switch in the green, so they're switching different retailers, followed by the red, what color? And those are the CSA. It's what we term now here is the landlord-tenant agreement. And then the very small amount in that purple is the mass acquisition customers. So that was last year. If we look at the past 20 years, we're really looking at, again, a very small percentage. Less than 4% didn't actively select a retailer. Now, should there be a case where customers need to be placed on a Polar service, there's a lot of communication involved to the customers. There's three key notifications, one by ERCOT, one by the retailer that they're transitioning from, and one by the Polar retail electric provider. And again, these notice requirements provide very clear information as to what needs to be said to the customer. Some of the specifics for that notification include the date the service is going to begin, a description of the rate, any deposit requirements that they may have, as well as ensuring that the customer is aware of any other products or services. Again, they're very specific statements that they're going to have to provide to the customers. Applicable terms of service, and just to reiterate that they can switch at any time. They don't need to wait until their meter read date to do so. So one of the things that we learned from Sheriland is, as they were preparing for market entry in May of 2014, they started taking moving transactions from the retailers in February. They essentially gave the customers two and a half months to choose a retail electric provider. If they haven't chosen their provider two weeks prior to go live, they were then randomly assigned to default retail electric providers. They took the retail electric providers that showed interest in becoming a default provider and certified them through the ERCOT flight testing. Again, they ensured that the default providers were offering market-based month-to-month products with no termination fee or penalty. And then Sheriland worked with ERCOT and those retailers to define the parameters for the random assignment of the customers. So in conclusion, really, customers will either be, they'll either select a retail electric provider or will be randomly assigned a default retail electric provider if they haven't made a decision by the certain date. Should a mass transition occur, customers will first be assigned to the voluntary retail electric providers, again, the ones with the market-based rates, and then the large service providers. And as we've seen with the data, we believe there's really minimal benefit to customers of LPNL, to have LPNL serve as the Polar. And staff recommends that LPNL not be designated as the provider of last resort. Hopefully, I covered everything. Are there any questions or comments at this time?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Wood. Okay, let's have comments, questions from council. Start with Ms. Joy.
Ms. Wood, you mentioned the mass transition event. That would be, for example, if one of the providers went bankrupt?
Correct.
Perhaps. I mean, we're not talking, when you say a mass transition event, everybody starts doing this. So what else would that include?
That's really the only reason, is if a default, if a retailer defaulted. And you can see, just from a timing perspective, back in February and a little bit in March of '21, when we had the freeze and all of, everything that happened after that, that's where we saw retail electric providers defaulting.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Other comments, questions? Counsel, you've seen this, I know, and I wouldn't suggest you're not engaged. I might ask Ms. Wood and Mr. Atkinson to talk about the next, sort of the next steps as we, because we continue to look at retail choice. You want to start with that, Jamie?
Sure. We're going to be bringing, I believe, the agreement to board, to vote whether or not they're going to enter into retail competition.
So that'd be to the Electric Utility Board?
The Electric Utility Board is the first.
At their February meeting? Is that right?
Correct, on February 15th.
Okay. And then after that, Mr. Atkinson, it would come to this board, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct. To enter into customer choice, competition, opt-in, they're all used interchangeably. But to create competition, as Jamie has said, the first step is for your Electric Utility Board to pass a resolution. Resolution says it is our intent to take the roughly 107,000 customers and to put them into competition. We need to meet certain conditions in order to do so. Counsel, you have that draft resolution, it's been presented publicly. Should the EUB pass that, it then comes to the council. Council has to consider the same resolution. Should the council pass that, that then ends up with ERCOT and with the Public Utility Commission, and that sets you up on the path. I think maybe two things to mention. Ms. Wood and her crew, the Electric Utility Board, are working very hard on a sequence of events for kind of public information, and I expect those are going to start sometime in February, potentially with an open house type event, as well as quite a few others. Mr. Rose has put together a great program to do that. Second point, though, we've had enough discussion about this out in the public, but I think we need to be sure we remind everybody of when this happens, when this happens. So if you recall, last Memorial Day, roughly 70% of the Lubbock Power and Light customers, I'll just be a non-engineer, the extension cords were switched and their extension cords are plugged into the ERCOT market. About 30% of the customers, the extension cord is still connected to the Southwest Power Pool, which previously had all of it. The 30% that are in the Southwest Power Pool today, and there is no difference to the customers, there's no rate difference, there's no one or the other, it's all invisible right now. That 30% that is still on Southwest Power Pool will switch over and put their cord into ERCOT the next Memorial Day. Following that, you still have a period of time in which you'll roll through. So Memorial 2023 is the connection of the 30%. You have to go through all the stabilization period. ERCOT and Public Utility Commission, both have got extensive requirements for the meters, registering, reporting, all of that. And I think, Jamie, the last I heard, we're talking third, but more likely fourth quarter of '23.
That's correct.
So let's call it late third quarter to the fourth quarter, calendar quarter of 2023. If all these other events occur, beginning with the Electric Utility Board next month, choice or competition becomes available to us as individual customers late in 2023.
Thank you. Nice summary of that, John. Okay, further questions from Ms. Wood or Mr. Atkinson? Okay. Jamie, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice job, appreciate it. It was pretty painless, right?
Yes, appreciate it.
Okay. Item 23 is to continue our discussion regarding allocation of the American Rescue Plan Act funds. I'll let Mr. Atkinson provide a quick update as to where we are, and then we will have some discussion. Jared?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, counsel, a lot of this is going to look pretty familiar. Allow me to apologize in advance, we have made progress since the last meeting, not as much as I intended, as y'all are aware, I've had some staffing challenges in the office, but I'll tell you where we are, show you where you are with your dollars, and take your comments. So, beginning with the updated ledger, the date of January 12 is correct, we updated it the day after the council meeting. You see the layout that we have. Really, the big change that council gave to us following your last meeting was to increase the funding in the job training category and to solidify some funding that we had in some others. We've got two topics that I'm leaving on the right-hand side of the page. We don't have a specific utility infrastructure, that's an eligible category, but would remind council, when we talk about things like the housing projects, that's really what that is. The goal is to get houses on the ground. We're accomplishing it with utility infrastructure. And second, we introduced the concept last time of council kind of maintaining some dollars on hand as a contingency. I think the phrase was keep your powder dry, council member. So we've done that. We've updated your balance. So right now, you have 16.35, that does not have a placeholder with it, 16.35 million. Take the categories that you have on the left side and let's move over kind of quickly to the update, and I'll go back to that for your discussion. You've got three items on your agenda today. Second reading of the appropriation for the cyber security, that being 2.25 million dollars. You have two new, they're in one budget amendment, but they will create two separate projects. One is housing, still at the 2.5 million. That is, right now, for two projects. Our next steps, if the council takes the first read today, the second read on the 8th of February, the next steps are to finish the contracts with those two providers. And counsel, those contracts come back to you. So creating our project does not send the dollars out the door, it just allows us to keep moving forward. The second one is the diversion project. Recall that this is a joint project now with Lubbock County. This is for the new facility that would be built by StarCare. It's not the existing hospital, it's a new facility for diversion. We have 3.5 million dollars set up in that. Same thing, counsel, if you take the first read today and you take the next read on February 8th, our next step is to get the contracts done and back to you, which also will be separate council action. Want to talk a little bit, we've had a chance to put more time onto the job training piece. Kind of the direction we're heading has not changed much from the last time we talked, although we learned some stuff literally yesterday. We're trying to focus this right now, two broad categories. One is what we term the talent pipeline management. That was what we introduced last time. That's really focused at healthcare. That is getting those workers into our healthcare facilities in Lubbock, for which right now there's a tremendous shortage. That's being led by your Lubbock Chamber of Commerce, Lubbock Economic Development Alliance. We're now going to incorporate some city staff involved with that. Stay on that focus. They have a very, very ambitious long-term goal with the opportunity for some other funding, other than ARPA funding. So what we've asked on that, what can be taken out of the talent pipeline management program that might be something council could consider to do immediately? That could be just helping take that next step with getting people that today are students into a license and into a facility. We'll have more on that soon. The second part of job training is focused on the trades, and not just trades, but also licensed trades, so both of those. We have two potential partners there, one that we've mentioned before, working with them to get numbers as to who can go through their program.
Adventure slides, one, please, Mr. Atkinson. There you go, thank you.
Whoops. So I'll come back to broadband. So the trades and the licensed trades that we're looking towards there, this is everything from CDL drivers to licensed tradespeople such as electricians, plumbers, HVAC, different things like that. Mayor Pope is assisting us with putting together a meeting of really the industry professionals here in Lubbock. We need to hear from them, what do you need, when do you need it, and how do we get it? And we'll bring that back to council. Back up to the broadband program, we do expect an announcement from the Broadband Development Office as early as next month, February. So we may have something on that. Just over the last week, a whole nother grant program has popped up that will assist with that. That could do one of two things, buy down the $2 million that we have set aside right now as kind of our match to the broadband pilot, or potentially using the same dollars to make it bigger. So we're chasing that as well, and that's Eric and James Brown that are working on it. The arts, the nonprofits, that group, that group being our partners, one of whom's in your audience today, they are moving and moving quickly. We are not waiting on them, they are waiting on us at the moment. We just have not had enough people in the office to get around to that one. But it's coming and I expect it will be here pretty quick. Council set aside a very nice amount for small business. This is not on here because it came in right before lunch today. We continue to coordinate with South Plains Association of Government. We have a proposal from them to kind of manage that for us. On its face, it looks really good. Mr. Howerton and his team will dig into those details. Short version, there's a whole bunch coming that should be here in the next two council meetings. So Mayor, with that, would you like me to go back to the ledger?
Yeah, I think that'd be a good place. Mr. Atkinson, would you do a, before we meet on the 8th, February 8th, our next meeting, would you get a, speak with the county judge and get an update on their progress or the, how much activity they've had regarding small business and arts and not-for-profits, please?
Yes, sir.
I think that would be helpful for us as we continue to make some decisions, okay? I'll look forward for comments, questions from Mr. Atkinson. Ms. Joy?
Well, Mr. Atkinson didn't talk about public safety. I was reading this week, and one of the uses for some ARPA funds includes these little signs that you can put by the roadways that actually belong to the police departments, my understanding. They're purchased by PD, that tell you how fast you're going. We've had a series of speeding, everybody's complained about people speeding. We've had lots of wrecks, which a lot of times are because of speeding, sometimes it's because of other things. But every time I see one of those, I slow down. I don't care if I go down the same road, which I did over by Circle K while they were working, they had one up there that showed how fast I was going. I don't know what they cost. I think somebody told me, what, $27,000 or something. That would be a good use of some ARPA money, so that we could have more. I don't know how many the police department owns. Chief Mitchell, do you? Chief Mitchell, do you?
We just picked up one, I think I shared that picture with the city manager last week, or week before last, we just picked up one, waiting to get the tags put on it so we can put it out there in these areas. That's one of the, one of the things that are on our list. We also have priced two more towers that are scissor lifts that we have out, and those are about 89,000 apiece, if I remember correctly. So those are some things that we are talking about. When you ask for that list of things for the ARPA funds-
Yes, yes.
-we're getting all those numbers to present to the city manager, so when you have your conversation with him, he has all that information. But we do have bids on the scissors lift. We just picked up one of our roadside digital signs, and those are going to be things that we're going to be asking for, or we're going to present to him to talk to you about.
And so, how many did you tell me that you have currently?
Right now, we have one, one new one that we just purchased. The one they bought several years ago was stolen and destroyed, if I remember correctly. Is that the one that was put into, to the lake? Yeah, several years ago. But we bought this one to put out there in these neighborhoods, and we're going to ask for more of those.
So that's all we have?
That's all we have.
We, we also have them inside of traffic as well. Now, they don't have the red and blue light on them that we, that we talked about, but we have several more.
They're saying they have four. We've got 135 miles of streets, and we have five and a half of these.
Five.
Five to go and do some good. I just, I think it's a good investment to help with, with traffic and hopefully alleviate some of the problems we're having. So I'm happy to know it's on the list, and you're right, because of circumstances beyond anybody's control, you guys have not been able to finalize those. But I'm very interested in what's on that list, even fire as well. You know, we've kind of separated in terms of health, kind of separated them out a little bit, I guess, from public safety. But we, we need to do this, and we need to do it intentionally, with a reason why we are purchasing and what we think the results-
And that's what we've been doing. Myself and the three assistant chiefs, we've pretty got a pretty good, extensive list of some different things, especially, we're looking at in regards to our different parades and, and our, where we have large congregations of people looking at rollout barriers and things like that. We've got bids on those as well. They're, they're about $180,000 for about, how many feet?
126.
126 feet. So we are getting, you know, city manager's giving us instructions. We are gathering all those bids so we can present to him a comprehensive list of some things that we believe would help our, our department and our city, and the safety of our city. So we're collecting those for him.
So that's about, what, 400 yards? Four football fields, 1,223 feet?
We were measuring them in the, in the stance and standpoint of can we block off this street? To keep a car from, you know, barricading through the street and running over pedestrians. So that's what we're looking at those type of devices for. So there are several things that we're looking at that we're going to present in regards to your ARPA list.
Okay.
Okay?
I just don't think six will get the job done. And three, what do you, what do you call that little eye in the sky thing? What do we call it?
Steve.
Those are scissor lifts. Steve, oh, Steve?
They're called Steve.
Steed?
Steve.
Oh, Steve. Did we name them after Massengill?
We don't know why, or at least we can't say publicly, but they're called Steve.
And, and, and they are effective.
They're very effective.
They were effective with our homelessness issue.
Right.
Because we could, we could either see what was going on or make them think we could see what was going on.
Right.
One of the two. So I'm really interested in seeing that, since we do have additional funding, and it appears that maybe some of our commitments may go down because of other funding that's coming, coming along. That's one. The second thing, and this doesn't deal with PD, I don't think, has to do with job training, but it could. Police officers, you know-
Chief's trying to get back to his seat as fast as he can. Yeah, yeah.
Well, I, you know, if, if you keep up with what's going on, you've got workforce solutions out there who also do training. South Plains College does a great job of offering training. All the schools and LISD and Cooper and Friendship have these programs where, you know, they have the mechanics program, they have the welding programs, all that. And, and what I'm wondering is, are we being able to coordinate all of that? Because I'm telling you, you can walk out of Friendship High School with a certification in welding.
Yes, ma'am, we are. So a big reason that we're trying to push at least two of the legs of the job training through LITA, Lubbock Economic Development Alliance, a large part of the funding that goes to the vocational training at Friendship and LISD and at Lubbock Cooper comes through the high demand job training grants that they get. They've been very successful with it. If you'll recall, discussions at LITA this year, pretty much, they've been able to push that money even out past Lubbock County into our surrounding jurisdictions. So our schools are in good shape with that. They have a role to play as we move forward with the rest of it. Our target at the moment is picking up that group that has come out of high school but is ready to gain an additional skill to get into the job market.
And I will just jump in real quick. Last week, I signed a letter of support, and I hope I'm not letting the cat out of the bag. I signed a letter of support for Texas Tech University, who is looking at starting a criminal justice program at their university. One of the things that we run into is you have to be at least 20 and a half to start our academy, because you have to be 21 to be certified as a police officer. So Texas Tech joining in and starting that program, we believe will also support us identifying some really talented recruits in the future.
And that's very good, very good news, really. Well, in some of the outlying school districts, we have to recognize that everybody doesn't go to college. Some kids don't even consider going to college, but they do know they have to get out and make a living. And so I very much want us to continue to coordinate all of that, because I think that's where, where we can fill some jobs with some, some really young people who can make a lot more money than they could make if they went to college and got out.
Okay.
Yeah, so, thanks to you.
And I would note that we've got a placeholder for two and a half million dollars for public safety, even though Mr. Atkinson didn't mention it, it is-
I don't think it's enough.
It's on the slide.
Yeah, that represents the projects that we've lined out for fire, and we're holding that to get our PD stuff, and we'll get caught up, we will.
Okay, let's, let's go to Ms., let's go to Ms. Patterson-Harris.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, that was from earlier, but the chief brought it up about Steve, because that was my concern.
All right, thank you, very much. Let's go to, let's go to Mr. Christian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, Ms. Joy was talking about that, about those lights that we were talking about on our streets, and I've always been a believer that our wide streets are a blessing and a curse, because they are so wide sometimes, especially like the slides and some, they're so wide, and you're looking at a, you don't even know or notice what a speed limit sign is, even if you know where, you know, they're there, but they're very hard to see because they're, our streets are wide. And, and I don't, sometimes I don't even think people realize how fast they're going. So if there is something, anything that we could do to remind people of the speeds that they're at on some of those roads, I don't think would be a bad thing at all. Some way that we could use the money to, to post, do a better job of posting what speed limits are on some of the streets, maybe needs to be looked at as well. But I really liked what, what we heard just a minute ago from the chief, that they're looking at some other public safety things that we could use ARPA money for, and that, I really appreciate that. I never thought about some of the things that you mentioned. So I, I think that we need to maybe look at, maybe bring some specific recommendations on funding some things in and around what Ms. Joy was talking about just a minute ago. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. Mr. Channis?
Thank you, Mayor. To the city manager, conversation was that you'll be consulting or talking with the commissioner's court as to money's available, or that they're allocating for the arts and the nonprofits? Was that correct?
Yes, sir. I've tasked to check with the county to see how, how the uptake is going on their small business, their arts, and their nonprofit programs.
Okay, I had heard, and I don't know how reliable it is, but that the county had already, or was seriously considering for the nonprofits, a $5 million. Are we matching that?
Not, not at the present time, and I do not recall the county's exact allocation, but it was significant. It was more than the council has teed up. Council has 1 million teed up for arts.
Yeah, I'm still of the opinion that 1 million is not close enough.
You're talking about the not-for-profits?
For the nonprofit, yes.
For the nonprofits?
Yeah, for the nonprofits. I, I would like to see that at 3 to 5 million. That's just my, my take on that. As well as the arts, I think, again, 1 million is not enough. And that would be chipping away at the 16.3 million, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Channis. Good input. I think we'll, we'll look forward to seeing what we learn from the, from the county.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Anything else, counsel? I'd remind you that Mr. Atkinson pointed out on one of his slides, keep, go back towards the beginning, please, Jared. No, the other way, I guess, yeah. Yeah, we, today on our agenda, Jared, you want to run through this just real quick again? Make sure everybody's up to speed on where we are, as to what we'll be considering today?
Yes, sir. You have three items that are on, or two items, it's three projects that are on the consent agenda today. The first is the second read of the budget amendment that establishes the 2.25 million for cyber security. So that, remember, we're setting each of these up with their own capital project, be able to track everything, keep it within the allocations.
Counsel, I would mention on that, that we've been briefed, because of the sensitive nature of this, it can be done in executive session. We've seen, we've had, gotten one high-level briefing. We'll be getting another one on this in the next several meetings.
Yes.
It's not likely the next meeting, but we will have one of those coming up soon.
Correct.
Please continue, Mr. Atkinson.
Yes. The next two items, housing and diversion, you have a single budget amendment. It still sets up two completely different projects. One project is for the housing programs. It is using the 2.5 million that's on the other slide. You'll have second read on it if it passes today on February the 8th, and then our next steps are to finish the contracts with the two providers we're working with and bring those back for consideration. The diversion program, this is the one that is partnered with the county. You have 3.5 million appropriated to that. So same thing, first read today, second read on the 8th if the first read passes, and our next steps will be to finish the contracts with Star Care and bring those back for your separate action.
Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Okay, counsel, any questions for Jared? Any final comments on ARPA before we move on to the, our next item? Okay, item 24 is some follow-up discussion regarding the 2021 street bond. Before we go to that, let's take a, we're, we're ahead of our schedule just a little bit. Let's take a, let's, let's take a 10-minute recess, and we'll come back and pick this one up, okay? Let's come back at, come back at 2:40, please. Thank you. Lubbock City Council's under recess. All right, counsel will come to order, it's 2:45. We have one item left in work session, as mentioned previously, a follow-up to the 2021 street bond. This is a bit of background and reminder, we, we talked about this item for the last, I think it's been on our agenda the last three regularly scheduled council meetings. Last Wednesday evening, Mr. Christian sponsored a listening session to hear what citizens had to say about that bond proposition last November. So I guess to begin our discussion today, I'll turn the floor to Mr. Christian for, for his summary comments about what he learned last Wednesday, and allow him to make the first suggestions about how we, how we move forward. Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was definitely worthwhile. It really was. We had, there was not many chairs empty that evening, and I appreciate Councilman Griffith and Councilman Harris, they were, they were there live and in person to see what was going on, and we had a very diverse group that were, but the consensus of, of the group, regardless what their specifics were about the bond package, it was very clear that it would have been better if we would have separated the Broadway project from the general streets proposal on the bond package. It was also a consensus, I believe, that even though it didn't pass, the needs are still there. So what do we do to move forward with addressing what needs are still there? Conversations after that meeting and at the meeting, and I truly believe that if, if we were to reintroduce the package in May, and it only included the general streets portion of the November election ballot, that it would pass. With that in mind, I'm recommending to call a bond election on May, May of 2022 to include the general streets project, including Broadway, excluding Broadway. I'll turn, I'll ask Mr. Atkinson to, to go through the mechanics of how we do that, and then I'll follow up with some other comments and some other things that did come out of that meeting last week, and some other things that I think that we need to do as we move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. Mr. Atkinson?
Thank you. Yes, sir. Kind of, counsel, just as a quick reminder, for an item to be placed on the May 2022 ballot, the election will have to have been completely called by February the 18th. So you have two reads of an ordinance that call an election. Should the council choose to push this forward for action, you would have the first read on February the 8th at your regularly scheduled council meeting, and if it passes on that vote, we will need to schedule a call meeting to consider it on second read. What goes behind that, we would need to get with the bond council and with others, go ahead and split that back out, set the amounts up, get all of the correct language for the ballot, for the ordinance, and for those other items that would call the election.
Thank you, sir. Couple of things that were, were pretty, in my opinion, were absolutes as we move forward too, that we definitely need to engage our citizenry. One of the things we would do if we were to bring the street portions of the bond back and put it on the May ballot, and we would immediately have, gather citizens to have a citizens committee that would guide this moving forward. Dan Wilson has already agreed to kind of head up that committee and help support it and, and communicate why it's so important to do this street part of the bond package so that we can stay, stay up with growth. Mr. Massengill mentioned earlier in a couple of comments that we had about infrastructure. I think it's vitally important, and I think that most, everyone that I've talked to said we, these items that are on the street portion of the bond package needs to be done, and they feel that they need to be done now rather than later. The other thing I would ask, if this does become a possibility, or does become an item that would be on the ballot, that part of people that were on that committee that I mentioned in regards to Mr. Wilson, that I'd like to have two recommendations from each council member who might serve on that committee as well. It was also very clear that even though we don't put the Broadway on the package right now, we need to do something with, Broadway is an important part of our future. So with that said, I think it was pretty much the consensus that we probably need to start a Broadway committee immediately too, separate and apart from the one that I just mentioned, to start working together to see how we can, we can make Broadway a success and get, working on Broadway right away, or as soon as possible. I think that's about it, and then, Mr. Atkinson, I want to make sure that it's clear to everyone. So that's where we are, Mr. Mayor. I think that it makes sense, and there's, there's much support from folks that I've talked to about putting the street portion of the November- from folks that I've talked to about putting the street portion of the November street bond election up and let the people vote on it in May of this year.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Christian. I, I thought I might let Mr. Griffith and Ms. Patterson-Harris make quick comments that they were, since they were there last Wednesday night, and then we'll open up the council to have some discussion. Mr. Griffith? Ms. Patterson-Harris, it looks like she's gonna have to wait a minute before she comments.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. The, I, I did appreciate Mr. Chris, Mr. Christian's willingness to host that, and I felt like he did a really good job asking secondary questions as to, and a lot of people did comment. There was obviously a lot of discussion on the, the Broadway part of it, and that they voted against the initiative because of Broadway. But there was still a lot of confusion. There was also others that spoke in favor of Broadway and BRIC. It was ver, it was enlightening to hear people come and speak. I will go ahead and say that I'm not for putting it back on the ballot in May. I think that's too early. As I've said before, the people have spoken with the, with the, with the vote last November. And so I think that there needs to be more time before it's brought back. That's just my, obviously, my personal opinion. And so I'm, I think that is too quick. I really do. And I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Griffith. Ms. Patterson-Harris, anything to add?
Just briefly, I, one thing that I noted, I would have liked to have seen more citizens representative of, of the makeup of the city, but we had what we had. But one of the individuals who was there who confirmed the same information that I received, and that with regard to the Broadway piece, that people were, were confused or didn't have the information that they needed to make a better decision regarding that. So I was glad that, that that actually came out, and she received her information the same place I did, when going on social media of Nextdoor. And so many of those citizens who are supporters of the historic BRIC made the same comment, and it just showed that they did not have the accurate information to, that could have caused them, or would have caused them, I believe, to make a different decision. I think that it was, I appreciate Mr. Christian, number one, for calling for the town hall to take place. I think that anytime we, we make sure that we give citizens an opportunity to hear from them, it's very important. What they do with it is on them. But I think that the fact of that you give them an opportunity to be heard is, is, is a really an A-plus thing for me, so I appreciate that. I'm gonna sit exactly the same place I was sitting before. I kind of agree with Mr. Christian in that I believe that those needs could be supported if brought back in, in May. But I'm a team player, and I'll accept what the council decides. That's my opinion of it. And that's all I got, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the, for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. Okay, I'll open the floor. Let's go, let's go to Mr. Chitas next. Swan?
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to extend a thank you to Mr. Christian for having the town hall meeting. I'm of the opinion with Mr. Griffith, you know, the, the election was held. The public voted. And to say, hey, you got it wrong, we're gonna give it another chance to get it right. I, I think May is too soon to have this election. So I would be in favor of not voting, I'm sorry, not holding an election in May, in my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Chitas. Mr. Massagio?
First of all, I agree. I, I appreciate Randy in organizing the listening session, and I think it's indicative of everyone's interest as, when you look at your attendance that day. I, you know, I've, I've expressed my concern about how short the timeframe is to get ready for an election, and then to call an, an election, and then to, I do think it's, it's important to have citizen involvement, but I still trying to reconcile, I, I think it would be important to have citizens study the, the, the bond package before we put it back up on the ballot, so I'm gonna have to give it a little more thought.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Ms. Joy, you have anything to add?
I do.
It's your turn.
Yeah, I did not attend. First of all, it wasn't a council listening, Mr. Christian, it was his. Ms. Patterson-Harris and Mr. Griffith and I spent a whole lot of time doing homework with the help of you guys out there, staff. We had staff evaluate our streets and give us a ranking. We hired a consultant to do the same thing, and then we took those and carefully studied them. We would love to have done it all, but there's not enough money to do it all at one time. And that doesn't count the number of hours that the streets committee spent driving over a hundred and thirty-five miles of this city. I have a different impression of why it, the bond did not pass. And one of the people that was invited by Mr. Christian to that meeting actually got up and made this statement, that people didn't trust this council. And this is a person who previously served on the city council, who did not, on that council, provide for the maintenance of the streets adequately. Who also said that there wasn't any traffic on Broadway. And in truth, in fact, the reason it failed was probably twofold. One was, it was a political issue that was underground. We had meetings, and we talked about what we were going, or thinking about putting on the bond. We talked about why, how, the whole nine yards. I got no feedback from anybody, except people when their streets fixed. And so as a political football, some citizens chose just to say, we're just not gonna, we're, we're gonna vote against it. This is political. Secondly, some people saw it from their perspective, my street, where I live, and not from the whole of the city of Lubbock. The three of us took off our council hats for our districts and said, we are looking at the entire city of Lubbock, and we are not going to be territorial about it. And so that's how this package came to be. I am not for, in favor of putting it on the May ballot. I am not in favor of a citizens committee. The only thing this failure, this election has cost anybody is the citizens of Lubbock, because we had it at a very good time, interest rates, we had it spread out over five years so that it wouldn't impact the, the, the property tax rate. There wouldn't be a huge spike in that, that it would be very level, and it would come down quickly. So the people who voted against it, there's where you place some responsibility. And it's some of the same people who complain about spending. So it's going to cost more next time, if that happens. It just is. But the responsibility lies at the feet of those people who were not honest with people about why they didn't vote.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Mr. Christian, you want to make a few more, couple, couple more comments, and I'll, I'll wrap it up?
I can't control what happened in November. That's the past. I'm looking to, to the future of what we can do with this. Mr. Griffith, I agree that the people had spoken at the ballot box in November. But I feel strongly that last week, we gave them a chance to speak again. And more importantly, what the outcome of that evening and conversations after, they appreciated the fact that we really went out of our way to listen. Because they don't believe that we listened to them. Ms. Joy, the, the comments that you have, I, those are your thoughts and ideas. All of those things may or may not have happened. But I want to move forward. And if there's a chance to talk and communicate with those people that were not in favor of this, for this bond package, for whatever reason theirs might be, I'm a big believer that you reach out and talk to some of those people. And you make a concentrated effort to say, why and what? And there is no question in my mind that the vast, vast majority of citizens right now would appreciate the opportunity to vote up or down on just the street portion of the bond package. But one of the things I want to challenge us today with is if we were to say, okay, let's do this ordinance, it'll come back to council, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Atkinson, we would present that to council at our next council meeting. All we're asking today is for us to put that ordinance together and present it to the council at next meeting, and then people can vote for it. But in the meantime, between now and next council meeting, maybe some, maybe there's some citizens that might call you, write you, find you somewhere and say, hey, this is either a good idea or it isn't a, a good idea. There's, there's a window here for us to, as a council, to say, we're gonna listen to you. We're thinking, we're gonna present this at our next council meeting. We want to hear from you. And if we get virtually no response, I personally can say, personally feel comfortable to say, we did, we went to the last degree to try to, if there is a confidence, uh, problem that some people have with us, we have done a few things to say, we're correcting those. We heard you last Wednesday in multiple ways. We are taking this part, taking this bond package apart like it was suggested many, many times. I could go on and on and on. But my point is, give it a chance. Let's bring this ordinance back. Give this, however many days that is between council meetings, an opportunity to encourage citizens to, we want to hear from you about the, the idea of pulling this apart, but also the idea of what we do to march forward with Broadway. Citizens committees are vitally important to the success of both of these concepts. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. Thanks, counsel, for all your comments. It, um, you know, it appears to me that we don't have consensus, or, excuse me, don't have enough folks in favor of, of considering this on February eighth, to, to set it for the ballot box in, uh, in May. I'll, I'll, I'll let you think about Mr. Christian's point about at least putting it on the, the, on our agenda for the eighth and have an up or down on that while I make a few comments. I, I probably find something to agree with everyone that's spoken on, and, and, and I fully don't, don't fully agree with, maybe with everyone, but I, I've shouldered a considerable amount of the blame for the failure of this bond previously, and I still feel that way. I, I feel like we, as some of you've said, we didn't do a good job promoting it. We should have had a citizens group leading it. There was way too much misinformation, to Ms., to Ms., Ms. Joy's point a moment ago, and maybe Ms. Patterson-Harris mentioned that also. I do agree with Mr. Chitas and, and Mr. Griffith that the citizens have, have spoken. I do think there needs to be, I think, probably more than just six months in between the, the votes. I think Ms. Joy's point about the timeframe in November of twenty-one being, having been ideal, I think are, are very well-made. And we can't wind that back, to Mr. Christian's point. And I, you know, the community will, will, will deal with that. I'm thankful for, for our, our growth, and, and I, I really believe that we did not put a package of, of wants on the ballot. I think they were needs, and I applaud the work that both the the Rhodes Scholars did, as well as our Future Needs Committee. They both worked all year long. And, and, and I think the thing that, you know, maybe makes me pause a little bit is that we talked, we, we, that was all done publicly. That was not done, you know, that was done, the updates were done in the, in these very council meetings, and I, I think it's unfortunate that some community leaders, in fact, other elected officials, chose to, to work against this street bond. That, that's their decision. I, I, I think that's largely, in some ways, what I would call small-minded. I think in some ways that was in, in retribution for this council's, the way that the sanctuary city ordinance was handled originally by this council late in two thousand twenty. But that's all behind us now. I, I do think there is a big risk that some citizens, even those that might consider this a need, would again vote against a May bond election because it was presented by this very same council. And I, I think that's a really, really big consideration in this, in the timing of this, and just in, just my, my takeaways on, on this, and what I've learned in the last, I guess, seventy-five days or so. So, counsel, I've given you a moment to consider Mr. Christian's thought about putting it on February eighth for thumbs up, thumbs down, giving certainly two weeks of heads up at a, at a council level. I guess all Mr. Christian has to do is get one other member to, to agree with him on that, and we would put it on the, the agenda regardless, based upon our council, council rules. But is there any discussion? Does, does, does his plea to consider it, at, at least is it on February eighth, does that change anybody's mind? on February 8th, does that change anybody's mind?
No.
Okay. Okay, well, we will, then we will.
Didn't mention it. We've mentioned it before, Mr. Mayor. We now know there will be three new members on this council.
Unless somebody changes their mind between now and.
In February the 18th.
In the middle of February.
Yeah.
Yes, that's correct.
There will be three. So, in all fairness, I can't agree to put it on the agenda.
Okay. We're scheduled to, to can talk a little bit more about this later in our meeting. And that would be that the citizens advisory part of this. And we've got a, a, a sample resolution that's at our, at our, at our place on the dais. I think it's, we're posted certainly sufficiently to discuss this. And I thought I'd get, let Mr. Atkinson sort of frame this for us real quick. And then we could have some discussion about this before we go to executive session. Jared?
Okay. So, the final item on your agenda tonight is 8.10. That's the council's opportunity, should they choose, to appoint a citizens advisory committee to really have some of the same discussions that are being held on the dais. I'll read from the excerpt that's on, on the wall, Council, it's on the, the actual form on your, on your place there. This was drafted really using the model that put together the committee that did the charter review. So, it has a stated purpose. It is primarily contained in Section 3. Citizen Advisory Committee shall promptly and thoroughly study the need for street and roadway construction and repairs within the city of Lubbock and make a report, including recommendations, to the city council in such form and depth as to identify specific construction and repair projects most needed by the city. The CAC also shall consider and recommend appropriate funding mechanisms to accomplish said projects, including but not limited to general obligation bonds to be approved by the citizens of Lubbock at an election. That's the stated purpose and certainly is something that should the council choose to go forward, you can modify that. Note that the makeup of the committee, and this is in Section 1, the form of the committee right now is drafted at seven members, one to be appointed from each elected official, with the mayor to designate the chair. Now, I will point out one substantive difference in this draft versus what the council approved when you did the charter review committee. That resolution contained a deadline. That resolution put that committee on a path to make a report back to council by date certain. This one does not. It, it is open-ended. You could consider putting one in if you chose, understanding the changes that are to come. It's likely best, if you want to do this, to leave that open and see how you might go. So, with that, we'd stop and let the council discuss it. If you choose to make any changes, we will make those between here and the regular meeting and so you would have a clean copy if you chose to do that. Mayor?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. I'll, I'll open the floor up for comments. I know Ms. Joy's already suggested she's not in favor of citizens advisory committee. Other, other thoughts about this? Mr. Christian?
Great idea. I think I heard that, you know, suggestion earlier, just a few minutes ago. I don't know if that number is the right number for the committee. I think it needs to be, I'd say at least twice that. If it's, as I understand, this is a standing committee? There's not any end date to this committee, probably, maybe, you know, I need for us to think about that. There's some, there's some immediate things, obviously, that they need to talk about. But moving forward, there's going to always be issues that I think that we need to, to make sure that we have a mechanism there that we, that citizens are going to have some input. We're going to have some other discussions on roads and such. So, just want to make sure, sure we make that clear, that this is another one of our committees, if so to speak, that we get citizens to. But obviously, it's an excellent idea. Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. Mr. Satterwater, Mr. Weaver, comment on that if you would, please. The, it would not be, it would not become a standing committee of the council. What are your, how would we, how would we make sure we get, if, if we were to adopt something like this, that we would make that clear?
I think you want some guidance in the, in the document itself. The city manager said we let that open in Section 6 as far as a deadline. If the, if the council wants to have it more open-ended and ad hoc, I think that needs to affirmatively be stated. If, if it's just project-specific, which I think is kind of what it's more geared toward now, by the way it's worded, you may want to put a deadline on it. But I think there does need to be some clarification so there's no ambiguity about the status of the committee. I would say that the way it's worded drafted right now, it's more project-specific because it's looking at a specific project and making specific recommendations. And when that's complete, I mean, arguably, its, its job would have been done by then. So, if the intent is to make it more a standing committee, I think it needs to stay that a little more affirmatively than it currently does. But this is your opportunity to weigh in and give staff guidance on any changes you want made before the version is presented tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Mr. Massengill?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, this, first of all, I, I have been vocal and I support the citizen involvement on this moving forward. To your efforts, Mr. Christian, they're, they're substantial and, and they, although the timing of this might not be what you were looking for, I think it still contributes and keeps this thing moving forward. As to the number on the committee, I could support seven. I can't support more than 14. I, I think 14 probably is, is, is too many. My recommendation on this, if we move forward, is that we have a deadline for this group so that it allows the new council time to consider the recommendation and call an election in November.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill. Yeah, good, good, good points. Okay. Ms. Patterson-Harris?
I, I guess I have a question as to the assignment of such a group. Is there assignment to take the same list of streets and roadways that the Future Needs Committee had to review and come up with streets that meet that need? Or, help me understand, because if that's the case, I'm having a little difficulty with just picking a different group of people to look at the same information unless we're expecting them to come up with something different. So, so that, that's my concern. I, I spent, and I don't have any personal feelings about it, but I did spend over a year of time reviewing those same streets that it sounds like we're going to have the same group of people review again. Or are we going to have them start from the beginning and drive around like the other three committee members did? I'm, I'm, I'm just kind of confused as to what their purpose would be. If someone will help me with that, then I may have some comments or something after
Well, I took, it's a, I think it's a very valid question. I, I think the, maybe the most pressing, you know, argument for a citizens group looking at it is that it puts it at least arm lengths, arms-length from the council. It gets another set of, of eyes and ears and minds to, to review it. Certainly, we could, the charge that we were to give the committee could be to look at the very same set of roads that were in the, the, on the proposition in November. It could be to open that, open that up. And that, that, that's this council's prerogative, I believe. But I think that's the, the, the reason, the reason why we would consider this. We are citizens. You make a good point, Ms. Patterson-Harris. For whatever reason, I think there's some members, some members of the community have taken us for tasks for not getting more input on this. I'm not sure I agree with that. But that has been publicly and privately said. So, that, that would, that's how I'd respond to that. I don't, I don't know if that is any comfort to you or if it does, does any good, but that's how I would, I mean, and I'd be glad, I'd be open the floor for anybody else that wants to add to that, but, but that, that's my thought about it.
I'll see if there's going to be any takers. Because this is my response, is that I would hope that as council members, the same council members that have kind of helped in some other situations that citizens were in agreement with, even though there's been some that they've not been, it, it, it just, it just kind of twists me to say that, okay, we're going to pick some reasons why we don't trust you on this, but we trusted you on some other things. I still state again that it, for me, it makes no sense to just take a different group of people to look at the same information. And I don't know if we're trying to, in hopes that they'll come up with something different or they'll stamp it or what. I'm, I'm just, I'm just confused there. For me, it seems like it's, it's, we've done what we're trying to do.
Let me take another shot. Because you make a good point, but remember, we talked, I mentioned this a couple of meetings ago, but, and maybe we're already seeing it with some of the interest in the elections. But I think it's very much within the realm of possibility, maybe even probability, that we have runoffs in these elections. Those runoffs would be the second Saturday in June. Is that June 11th? The council then would about 10 days later, roughly right, canvass those votes. So, that you would have, you would seat your new council that second meeting in, in June, which would be the 28th. Is that right? Is my math right? 12, 13? Yeah. Is that right? And that the second? Is that the second? Second, yeah. So, that council, they would, now, you, and if, if, if in fact, you'd ask this committee to make a report by the end of June, as an example, or by the end of May, they would be making that report to a new council. You know, which in some ways, that is a different set of eyes than, than the current council. But it would at least, and particularly to Ms. Joy's point about timing, because I would argue that this November is going to be better than a year from May. You see what's going on with the, likely happening with the interest rate environment, particularly with what the Fed has said and some of the inflationary pressures that they're going to be working to, to unwind, which is not going to be easy. That's not a, unfortunately, that's not a 90, 60, 90-day kind of thing. That, you know, time still may be of the essence in November from a, taking advantage of, of a, of a more attractive rate environment. It would at least have something on the table. Now, the new council might say, hey, we're not ready to deal with this. We don't want to call an election. But that would give them the information if they chose to do that. And that would be, you know, the, I think the reasoning, reasoning why. But I, you know, I, I can see both sides of it. I do think a group of citizens looking at it is, is probably wise, but that's just one person's thought. Ms., let's see, let's hear from, let's go to Mr. Griffith next.
Thank you, Mayor. Very well said, Mayor, on the points you made. My seat will be vacated. There'll be somebody new here. I believe that out of respect to that individual, very lucky individual.
You're the lucky one.
I don't know why I'm being laughing. So, but truly, out of respect to the position, I would prefer they make a decision on who they select to be on a committee. It is a very important topic. We have done an incredible amount of work. The, a lot of the work is done. There's no doubt that citizen involvement would help. There's no doubt that timing's an issue. But I believe that whoever sits in this seat futuristically should be able to create their designee on that committee. I'm not against a citizen committee at all. I think it's a really good idea. I'm just not, I, I don't feel comfortable putting, appointing someone to, that should be done by the future council, I believe. Thank you.
Mr. Christian?
After him, Mr. Griffith, I, I tend to agree with you for a lot, a lot of the reasons. But I do think who's ever in these seats after Election Day should really need to have some, you know, guidance and, and, and study this very carefully, this whole issue. So, to prepare themselves to who would be a best selection on that committee as well. We've been, you know, eaten and sleeping and breathing some of these issues for quite a while and there's so much, so many, you know, dynamics to them. I think that makes me feel, you know, the, the people that are still here after Election Day, we, we have a different perspective who might be on that committee. I, I think it's very important that they get, you know, some good guidance and tutorials, so to speak, and bring them up the entire history of some of these projects and then offer their suggestions for the committee. I just wanted to make that note, Mr. Atkinson. So, I think it's important that they're very well-versed with all these issues before they do a pick nominees, if you will. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. Ms. Joy?
Very briefly, this decision about this resolution and a decision about whether to put it back on the ballot belong to the council that will be elected in May, in my
Counsel, it appears that we don't have any enough support to move forward with this resolution this evening. If something changes your mind, we can take it up. Otherwise, this evening, it'll probably just die for lack of a second. I would, I would caution this council, or more likely councils of the future, that delaying this, what is likely to be another 15 months, I think most likely early, you know, May of '23, the most likely earliest you would see this with a new council, is going to put pressure on this council to pick and choose, or, excuse me, the next council, to pick and choose potentially some roads projects. And maybe even do some, you know, you've got to pay with them, you've got to pay for them with cash. And potentially, you could find reserves to do a mile or so. I mean, remember, you're talking 6 to 8 million a mile, roughly right. 10 to 12, depending, yeah. That'd be the very, very low end, depending if you've got, if you've got, some places we already have engineering done and that work would be, and we have rideaway and, and, just depends on what your, you know, what, what your, what kind of road you're doing, if you're doing like a full replacement. I think, you know, that, those become real dicey policy decisions. And it, you know, I'll take 34th Street as an example. It touches, it still touches the majority of our council districts, even after redistricting, touch 34th Street. Well, if you had 7 to 10 million, where do you go? Do you go between 34th and Slide? Or do you go between Avenue Q and I-27? You know, if we went down the, the, the road here today, we would get, we'd get very different opinions on that, I believe. And while these remain needs today, there are emerging needs that will become even more. needs that will become even more so in the next, in the next year. Things like 146th Street, as an example. And some, well, really work all over town. That's the one that sort of jumps out to me. So, um, we will, Ms. Joy?
Mayor, I'm kinda following your, your line there. But we're going to spend $3 million on, um, mill and relay on 34th Street, because
Yeah.
we're, we're able to do that on a project that I think our last estimate was 15, about 15 million for the two. But it was also pointed out to me again, by Mr. Griffith, that if people had really, if they had listened to us when we were telling them what we were planning on doing, that 114th Street from Indiana to Quaker is MPO money. Quaker to Slide is already in the city budget to be done. And 82nd and Marsha Sharp is MPO money.
Upland.
Upland, I'm sorry, Upland, is, was MPO money. Those projects weren't even included in this. So those projects are gonna be done. You know, as soon as we get the money out of MPO, and the city can complete, uh, their project from Quaker to Slide, they're gonna be done. So when you talk about picking and choosing, yeah, that, that, that may be what it is, but that's the alternative to voting down a bond, for whatever reason you may have come up with, whether you thought you didn't want your taxes raised, or whatever it was. So I'm really proud of the fact that we have been able, with MPO money, to do those stretches, which were, really need to be done, and that in our city budget, we were able to do the Quaker to Slide. So just kinda following your line of thought.
Yeah, and the mill and relay you spoke about is, was part of our contingency plan, correct?
Yeah.
Which we had built Plan A and Plan B, Plan B and B in the, Plan we'd roll out if the bond failed, right? Yeah. The, the, our streets guys rolled, worked out. Yeah, okay. Our, our, our public works guys, I should say. Okay. Anything else on this council before we wrap? Okay. Mr. Griffith, yes?
I would like to say something. I, I will make this quick. Thank you. I would like to thank our public works professionals, uh, that some of them are in the audience today, and, uh, all the work that they do, and continue to do every day to improve our streets and our transportation needs. And some of those projects that we proposed in the bond, or every one of them, I should say, uh, they were right on top of. And we had excellent, excellent work done by that department, and I appreciate it. Mr. Franklin, I do not see today, but, um, I would like to shout out for that entire department and all the work they've accomplished. Thank you.
Well said, well said. Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Okay. Council, we do have need for an executive session today. It's a person on our agenda. We'll her, we'll hold executive session for the purpose of consulting with city staff regarding pending or contemplated litigation or settlement agreements, and hold consultation with attorneys under Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code. It is 3:36. Lubbock City Council's recessed to executive session. Staff, for planning purposes, we'll, we'll reconvene about 4:45. Good afternoon. Welcome to Lubbock City Council. Our Lubbock Council, the council's back from executive session. We will take care of our ceremonial items before convening our regular meeting. It is 4:53. We'll start this evening with our invocation, followed by the pledges. Our invocation this evening is led by Stake President Spencer McCombs with the Lubbock Stake of the Church of Jesus Christ of the Latter Day Saints. Would you all please stand? Mr. McCombs, if you'd come forward, please, sir?
Our Father in Heaven, we're so very grateful this afternoon, this evening, that we can be gathered for this city council meeting. We're so very grateful for the freedoms and blessings that we enjoy in this country, these freedoms and blessings that come from Thee. We are grateful for those who lead us, both nationally and in this great state and in this city. We ask a blessing upon them and their families. We pray that Thou will lead them and guide them in their decisions, to continue to bless them with wisdom and guidance and, and judgment and in mercy. We are grateful for the blessings that we enjoy of peace and prosperity, and pray that Thou will be upon those who may be suffering at this time with challenges in their, in their lives, physical, emotional, financial, that they can find peace and relief and healing. We pray a special blessing on those who may be dealing with the effects of this pandemic, that they will recover and can find healing. We also ask you to bless their families. Please bless all those who are first responders, police officers and firefighters and EMS personnel, and also the healthcare workers, that they will be protected and have the strength and energy that they need. We pray for individuals and families in this community, that there may be love at home, that all may feel of Thy love and enjoy Thy blessings, and that we can have peace and prosperity in our communities. We ask for Thy blessing and Thy Spirit to rest here on the proceedings of this meeting, and say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Will you please join us in the pledges to the American and the Texas flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to Thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
President McCombs, thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate you opening our meeting with the invocation. Mayor Pro Tem, thank you for leading the pledges. We have one special recognition and presentation tonight, and I'm gonna call on my peer and the city councilman from District One, Juan Chitas, to lead the way on this tonight. Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. Along with my recognizing a very special person, I've got Chief Foggus in here that's gonna be helping me recognize a, I, I, we call him a hero for what he has done just a few weeks ago. And heroes are people who do what has to be done, when it has to be done, regardless of the consequences. This pretty well describes what Freddie Garcia did. And at this point, Freddie, would you and Leila come up to the front, please? Of course. How can we say no? Come join us, Freddie. It is with great honor to help recognize Freddie Garcia for the quick and heroic action earlier this month. On the morning of Sunday, January the 9th, a fire broke out at Acadia Mobile Home Park. Members of the Lubbock Fire and Rescue told local media that when they arrived, a mobile home was on fire and surrounded by a cloud of black smoke. Three residents were inside the home when the fire began, and all three were, all three made it out alive, thanks to the bravery of Mr. Freddie Garcia. We are all thankful for Mr. Garcia that he was there, because when he saw the flames coming out of the home on fire, he quickly jumped into action. Mr. Garcia broke a window and pulled two of the residents out of the, the, the mobile home that was on fire. Mr. Garcia put his own life at risk to save someone else's, a true hero. He acted quickly, boldly, and unselfishly, and he's a true hero. Now, Fire Chief Foggus has a little, few words to say for you as well. Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Councilman. Whenever I speak publicly, one of the first things I say is how proud I am to live in Lubbock, a community like this. And it's because of people like Mr. Garcia that, that make that true. I wouldn't wanna be a fire chief anywhere else in the world but Lubbock, Texas, because the community has always been so appreciative of first responders, but they also go above and beyond to help each other out. And that's what we need more of in this world today. So I'll go ahead and read a little bit about the Medal of Valor. Mr. Garcia will be receiving the Citizens Medal of Valor. It is awarded only in those events wherein a citizen has under especially hazardous conditions courageously risked their own life to save or protect another, an act that shows bravery in life-threatening conditions. Now, the official writ of the award. On January 9, 2022, at approximately 9:57 a.m., Lubbock Fire Rescue responded to Acadia Mobile Home Park, 2317 Auburn Street, for a reported structure fire. The involved property was a multi-level mobile home. The reporting party looked out from across the street and noticed the fire burning and called 911. The residents were asleep inside of the mobile home at the time of the fire. The resident advising smoke and noticed fire was blocking the only exit from the mobile home. Two residents ran through the fire and exited the mobile home while a third was still inside. It was at this time that citizen Freddie Garcia broke a window out of the mobile home and pulled two residents from the structure. The third resident was transported to UMC with minor injuries. Had it not been for the tremendous bravery shown by Freddie, the outcome of the third person pulled from the mobile home would have been much worse. For his actions, Mr. Freddie Garcia is hereby recognized with the Citizens Medal of Valor. Thank you for your actions and for going above and beyond. Thank you, sir.
I'm just glad I got, I saved, I was able to be there, save him. And, I mean, thank you, you know, I was just scared and couldn't see that the guy lose his grandpa, you know, so it just woke something up in me, and I just went and did the best I could, and I was able to save him, so.
Thank you again, Mr. Garcia. I might note that not only is Mr. Garcia brave, he's smart enough to get out of here real quick before the meeting gets going. All right. It is 5:03. Today is the 25th of January 2022. I'll call the Lubbock City Council to order in our regularly scheduled second meeting of the month in January. Our first item on tonight's agenda is Item Five, Citizen Comments. We've had no citizens sign up to speak this evening, so we'll move to Item Six. Item Six begins on page 12. It is the item that we normally, where we approve minutes, excuse me, minutes from previous meetings. And tonight, the agenda package included only the minutes of the December 14, 2021 Regular City Council meeting. Council, I'll open the floor for a motion to approve those minutes.
Move for approval?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chitas. Thank you, Ms. Joy. Are there additions or corrections to those minutes? All those in favor of approving those minutes as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that very same side? That motion carries seven to zero. The consent agenda is Item Seven tonight. It begins with Item Seven, One, on page 30. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine and are enacted by one motion without separate discussion. If the council or for member desires to discuss an item, that item is removed from the consent agenda and is considered separately. Council, it's my understanding that there are no pulls this evening from the consent agenda. Looking down both ways to make sure that's correct. Okay. There are no pulls. I'll open the floor for a motion to begin consideration of the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. We have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by the same side? That motion carries seven to zero. All right. Let's now move to Item Eight. It begins, is the regular agenda. It begins on, on page eight, one, with a number of zone cases. Eight, one, two, three, four, five, and six are all first reads of zone cases that have been approved and sent to us by the Planning and Zoning Commission. They will require a public hearing on all six of them. Prior to that public hearing and discussing, Council, how you'd like to handle these, Brian Isom, our Director of Planning, is gonna give us a overview of all six cases, beginning with Case One. That's Zone Case 2016C, beginning on page 524. Mr. Isom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Case 2016C is for TND Real Estate and Rentals LLC. This is a request to rezone property from family apartment District A1 to garden office District GO at 1306 Avenue R. We submitted 18 notifications and received no responses back. Here we show the subject site outline in orange, generally located west of Avenue R and south of 13th Street. The subject site is zoned A1 with A1 to the east, and a mix of A1 and GO to the west, and GO again to the north. The subject site is also located within the South Overston Historic District. The future land use map calls for medium density residential in the area. And here we have some photos of the subject site in the bottom right, as well as some of its surroundings. While the future land use map calls for medium density residential in the area, this request would be compatible with the surrounding garden office zoning and development to the north along Avenue R and along 13th Street. If approved, the applicant would need to provide a six-foot-tall, solid screening fence adjacent to the residentially zoned property, adjacent to it. This request should be compatible with the surrounding area, and the site is located on Avenue R, which is the local street that can provide access to smaller, destination-oriented areas such as neighborhoods, subdivisions, or local business districts. Staff recommends approval of this request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. Isom. Council, any questions for Mr. Isom? All right. Let's move to Item Eight, Two. Mr. Isom? Begins on page 537. Zone Case 3455. Begins on page five thirty-seven, zone case thirty-four fifty-five.
Zone case thirty-four fifty-five is for Red Canyon Development LLC, represented by Hugo Reed and Associates. The request is for a specific use for a commercial athletic field, park, stadium, or arena on property zone transition, generally located south of one hundred and forty-sixth Street and west of Quaker Avenue. We sent out three notifications and received one in favor and none in opposition. Here we show the location of that letter of support. Here we have the subject site outline in orange, again, generally located south of one hundred and forty-sixth Street and west of Quaker Avenue. The subject site is zone transition with additional land zone transition surrounding it. Here we have some of the subject site photos, as well as the boundary provided by the applicant, and then the site plan of the proposed golf course, which the specific use is for. The request is compatible with the surrounding area and is located along a collector street and is located centrally between two arterials which serve the needs of the local and regional traffic in the area. Staff recommended approval of this request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval by unanimous vote.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Isom. Questions on thirty-four fifty-five, Council? Item eight-two? Okay. Let's move to Ms. Joy.
Does that property continue to be transitioned?
Yes, ma'am.
Even though it's specific use?
Yes, ma'am.
But it will retain its transition?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Explain that. That's that seems a bit unusual, Mr. Isom. I don't recall one of those, and.
We probably haven't done one left it as transitioned. Generally, they'll request a different base zoning district. There's a reason why they requested the transition, and it's tied to the next case.
Okay.
But we we looked at this from different angles of going in with a residential district or a commercial district. The issue with going in with a commercial district, if the thirty-month reversion clause were ever to kick in, we'd be left with whatever base district we applied to it, so we left it as transitioned to make it similar to the surrounding.
Okay. All right. Let's let's please continue. Let's go to item eight-three, page five fifty-four, zone case thirty-four fifty-six.
Case thirty-four fifty-six is for one hundred and forty-sixth and Quaker LLC, represented by Hugo Reed and Associates. The request is to rezone property from transition District T to general retail District C-three for a microbrewery generally located west of Quaker Avenue and south of one hundred and forty-sixth Street. Submitted three notifications and received none in favor or in opposition. Here we show the subject site outline in orange, generally located south of one hundred and forty-sixth and west of Quaker. The subject site is currently zone transition with additional land zone transition to the south and to the west, and property zone C-three at the other three corners of the intersection of one hundred and forty-sixth and Quaker. The future land use map denotes this property or this intersection as a commercial node, and here we have some more subject site photos of it in the surrounding area, as well as the boundary proposal by the applicant. The request is in compliance with the future land use map and comprehensive plan, as this intersection is designated as a commercial node, and is compatible with the surrounding area and is located along a collector street and is located centrally in between two arterials which serve the need, sorry, it's located along two arterial streets which serve the need of local and regional traffic. Staff recommended approval of this request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote. And so, to explain the reason of the transitioning from the prior case, if you recall, microbreweries, micro distilleries, and that that land use group has some separation requirements from property zone RR, R-one, R-one A, R-two, and A-one, but not a separation requirement from property zone transition.
And then the 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 rest of that, we saw plat, we saw a proposed plat for the non-transition area in the case previously, which looked like a residential development.
The remainder of it is going to be residential development.
But this would supers, this would precede that, so it would not cause a problem when that was zoned R-one?
I believe from from our discussions, their intention is to leave that area as own transitioned to, because it can develop as R-one A.
Okay. All right. Council, any questions on thirty-four fifty-six, item eight-three? Okay. Let's go to eight-four. It's on page five sixty-eight, zone case thirty-four fifty-seven.
Case thirty-four fifty-seven for Cotter Ranch, represented by Delta Land Surveying. This request is to rezone property from transition District T to local retail District C-two at sixty-two oh one, one hundred and fourteenth Street. We sent out nine notifications and received none in favor or in opposition. Here we have the subject site outline in orange, generally located south of one hundred and fourteenth Street and east of Milwaukee Avenue. Again, the subject site is zone transition with additional land zone transition to the north, which is developed with a single-family subdivision, and to the south and west, which is developed with other small businesses or is vacant, along with high-density apartment district to the east, which is developed with a religious institution. The future land use map designates this intersection or this area as low-density residential. Here we have some subject site photos, as well as some of the surrounding, and the boundary of the request provided by the applicant. While the future land use map calls for low-density residential in this area, the comprehensive plan notes that the frontage of major thoroughfares should be eligible for neighborhood center uses, as well as this is an adaptation of an existing commercial structure. The request is compatible with the surrounding area and is located along a minor arterial street, which are continuous routes whose function is to serve high-volume needs of local traffic and regional traffic. Staff recommended approval of this request, and P and Z recommends approval by a vote of eight to zero.
I think it was in your write-up on this, but this is a existing building that's there today, as I recall.
It was a pecan shelling.
Right. Yeah. They use these guys.
Building.
Okay. And they're going to convert it into restaurant.
Restaurant and some small retail.
Okay. All right. Any other questions on eight-four, Council? Okay. Let's go to eight-five, page five eighty-three, zone case thirty-three oh eight E.
Case thirty-three oh eight E is for BBA Homes Land Company, represented by Delta Land Surveying. The request is to rezone property from high-density apartment District A-two to general retail District C-three and to family District R-two, generally located south of nineteenth Street and east of Upland Avenue. We sent out fifteen notifications and received none in favor or in opposition. Here we have the subject site outline in orange, generally located south of nineteenth and east of Upland. The subject site is currently zoned A-two with additional A-two to the east. We have R-two to the south and a mix of R-one and C-four to the west, along with additional R-one to the north. The future land use map designates this area as commercial at the intersection and low-density residential surrounding. Here we have some subject site photos of the subject property in the top left, as well as its surroundings, and the boundaries of the two requests provided by the applicant. We'll see the C-three at the intersection and R-two surrounding. The request for C-three at the intersection of nineteenth Street and Upland is in conformance with the future land use map. While the R-two is not in conformance with the low-density residential identified in the future land use map, it is consistent with the existing R-two to the south. The request is compatible with the surrounding area and is located along a principal arterial street, which is which are continu, continuous routes whose function is to serve high-volume needs of local and regional traffic. Staff recommended approval of this request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval by a vote of six to two.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Isom. Questions on eight-five, zone case thirty-three oh eight E? Okay. Let's move to eight-six, page five ninety-nine, zone case thirty-three fifty-eight B.
Case thirty-three fifty-eight B is for BB Homes Land Company, represented by Hugo Reed and Associates. The request is for a specific use for garden homes on property currently zoned, reduced, setback, single-family District R-one A at nine oh one Enler Avenue. We sent out thirty-six notifications and received zero in favor and zero in opposition. Here we have the subject site outline in orange, generally located east of Enler Avenue and south of Fourth Street. Again, the subject site is zoned R-one A and is surrounded by property zone either R-one, R-one A, or R-one specific use for reduced setbacks. Here we have the subject site photos and the boundary and proposed layout provided by the applicant. The request is compatible with the surrounding area, and the request for garden homes provides an additional housing type within the area. This project is also designated or is located along a principal arterial, which again are designed for higher-intensity traffic. Staff recommended approval of this request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval by unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. Isom. Council, any questions on case thirty-three fifty-eight B, our item, our our item eight-six? Okay. Don't go far, Mr. Isom. I know you've got another item coming, and we may have questions for you on some of these. All right. Council, how do you want to consider this? You want to do one public hearing? You want to separate these? What are your, what's your pleasure on this? Mr. Mr. Griffith?
One.
One, one, one hearing? One public hearing? Okay. That's okay to my right. What about to my left? Ms. Patterson-Harris, you go with that? Ms. Ms. Joy, you okay with that?
Okay.
Okay. All right. So we'll do, we'll do one joint public hearing for these six items. So if you're here tonight to support, to speak either in favor or in opposition, I'll call you up in a moment to to have a chance to do that. After we've, after we've heard from you, then we'll consider these these items, okay? City Council will now hold a public hearing for zone cases eight-one through eight-six. The public hearing is now open. I'll invite anyone that would like to speak in opposition to any of these cases, eight-one through eight-six. Anyone that's in opposition, please come forward. Okay? Anyone that's in favor of items eight-one through eight-six, please come forward. Evening, Mr. Holman. You know the routine.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm Terry Holman with Hugo Reed and Associates. We're at sixteen oh one Avenue N. I'm going to work a little bit backwards this evening. I'm going, I'm representing three zone cases tonight. The last one you heard was for BBA Homes, for the garden home zoning in what we know of is our hill valley development. This is the last two phases of of that particular development. We're planning to put in about three hundred and fifty more lots, and that will complete this this phase. And so I think it's fairly straightforward. It is garden home zoning. We are planning front-entry garden homes at this location. I'll be happy to answer any questions on that. And then we also are representing the the two sets of people who are looking at the zoning at one hundred and forty-sixth and Quaker. I heard a couple of questions tonight. I thought I might add a little bit of flavor to it for you, and again, I'm going to work backwards. Item eight-point-three is, I think for your purposes, a fairly straightforward C-three zone case. This is eight acres of what would be what I would call policy commercial zoning at a thoroughfare, thoroughfare intersection. What Mr. Isom alluded to was that for a part of this tract, we do intend to go to zoning board of adjustment to ask for a conditional use for a microbrewery. So that triggers some setback requirements that we have to abide by. And when I visited with Mr. Isom about, you know, how we wanted to put all this together, I thought it was a great idea that we leave it as T for transition, because the zoning code allows us to sort of work around that and not have to worry about the alcohol separations for a T district. Now, there is residential zoning on the opposite side of one hundred and forty-six. We have to meet that separation requirement, no question on that. But we have friendly neighbors in this in this entire project. We we have a land developer who is who is doing the residential development. He's also helping with the golf course that I'll speak to here in a second, and so this is all transparent, and everybody is aware of what what the grand plan is. I think it's a great use for this corner. It'll be a nice little destination entertainment spot there at one hundred and forty-sixth and Quaker. Then moving now back to item eight-point-two, yes, we did leave it as T. We requested a specific use. The thing that I think works for us is the the way the code is written, it says it's an athletic field, park, stadium, or arena in any district of site twenty acres or more. So we're a hundred some odd acres. So even though it's T, the code still makes a provision for us to be able to do that. And I think the last thing you would want would be a, you know, a commercial zoning district occupying the whole one hundred and thirty-three acres, and then to have something, you know, not move forward. So to us, it just made a lot of sense. It is a little bit off the beaten path, but for what we're trying to accomplish, I think it worked out very well. Lastly, there are some what I would call accessory uses that go with the golf course that shows up on the site plan, clubhouse, pool, tennis, some little casitas for, you know, folks visiting the course. I mean, it's going to be a first-rate deal, and I just would appreciate your vote in favor of it. And also, I do have the representatives of both the golf course and the the other zone case here tonight as well.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Holman.
Thank you.
Other other speakers in favor of of any of the any of these six zone cases? Please come forward. If you'd identify yourself and and read your.
And I don't have the pamphlet.
That's okay.
Okay. I'm Tamila Pittman with TND Real Estate and Rentals. And we're wanting the office garden zoned for this property, because we want to put our businesses in there, and we're looking mainly like for, I'm real estate, my husband's Edward Jones, we have a cruise planning business. So this will house four offices inside, and all we're needing is office space inside. So basically, it was an apartment, but it didn't really look like an apartment, looked like a regular house inside, in which they altered a bathroom and kitchen that was kind of not done right, and so it made perfect sense just to clear it and have a handicap bathroom for clients, and then have a fenced-off area for the back and have it paved for clients to come in, and then it has three entrances into the home. So that worked out good for us in this decision-making.
And this is on case eight-one, correct?
Yes, the first one. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Would you give us your address for the record case?
Yes, it's one seven, one seven oh three County Road, seven five seventy, in Cooper Ranch, Lubbock, Texas.
Thank you very much.
Seven nine four two three.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We may call you back. Thanks for being here. Okay? All right. Anyone else that would like to speak speak in favor of a case tonight? Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Lacy Cotter-Bardeman. I have the property, it's case, zone case thirty-four fifty-seven, to convert Pecan Ridge into a new new building. We're just excited to rehab it. I've done that with a lot of, I mainly do it with ranchland. This is my first foray into anything having to be in the city property, but I'm just excited to get it done, and do you have any questions about what we're going to be doing?
Why don't, before, we may have questions. Why don't we go and get your comments, and we'll we'll call you back in a minute after the public hearing if we have specific que, well, we can get questions on this. Go ahead, Ms. Joy.
I just want you to tell us what you are putting in place of the pecan shelling.
Okay.
Because it has a story behind it.
It does, and the building's been there for a very long time. Many people know and have done business with the jobs who owned it, owner prior to who I purchased it from. I bought all of the pecan processing equipment. I moved it to another one of my properties outside of town, and with this property, we're hoping to do a kind of a boutique. Our whole purpose is to support West Texas, West Texas artists, food, everything. I'm a fifth-generation rancher, married to probably a fifth-generation farmer, and so cotton and cattle are very dear to me, and I have a meat company, so we'll be selling our meats. The restaurant will be serving our meats as well. I've done business with Whole Foods for the last nineteen years, and so we'll be selling just what I sell to them at a at a very high markup locally, and, you know, just be able to open up more eyes to what we have local, as far as just the talent that we have, as far as music, art, food, everything, and so that's one of our things that we're hoping to do. We'll have a commercial kitchen in the middle and then a small restaurant in the back. We'll serve just a few items every day, and it'll be up to the chef, and then we'll also have it available for rent, for parties, meetings, whatever, so.
Is anybody still doing the pecan shelling business?
Um, I purchased that. We did not do that this year due to how long it took to purchase it, but next year we'll be processing pecans.
I always feel guilty when I come in because my grandparents always did that themselves, you know, and I used to have to help them, but y'all are so, it's pretty painless the way they, they did it, so I'm glad it's going to be back in business.
It, it will be. It just, for that property, it seemed to be somewhat of a waste to take up that much room, so. But we will be keeping all the pecan trees, so.
Cool, nice.
Thank you.
Mr. Christian, hold on one sec.
I asked one of my questions, but I'm very familiar with it. It's, it's in my district and it sounds really exciting because I, you know, drive by there many times, so I'm anxious to see your dream come true in regards to what that will be because it'll, it'll be very nice and a great location adjacent to Los Residential. And when you, when you open up, let me know.
Well, thank you very much. I hope you'll all come and support us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to speak in favor of cases eight one, two, three, four, five, or six? Anyone that would like to speak in opposition? One more chance. Okay, I'll close the public hearing on eight, on items eight one, eight two, eight three, eight four, eight five, and eight six. Counsel, open the floor for a motion to consider these either collectively or individually. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to consider these zone cases collectively.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Okay. A motion from Mr. Massengale, a second from Mr. Christian. Okay, let's open the floor for discussion. Ms. Joy?
On eight five, that planning and zoning vote was six to two, so I was curious about the two no votes. Brian, do you recall?
I wasn't, sorry, I wasn't present for that meeting.
You weren't there.
But I asked Kristen about it and the only discussion that they had on the dais was that the applicant wasn't present. So they weren't, I guess he wasn't able to answer some of their questions that they might have had.
Okay. Well, hmm, that's interesting. Okay.
All right, anything else, Ms. Joy? I, I want to check with staff. Mr. Atkinson, you and I, Mr. Weaver talked a little bit yesterday about eight two and eight three. Have y'all gotten, Mr. Weaver, have you guys gotten comfortable with the way we're handling that? Mr. Atkinson, I mean, I don't.
My, my only concern is in T, it's my understanding there are some uses allowed in T, residential type uses. So I'm a little concerned about the impact of those potential uses in T given the other case.
Certainly. Mayor, I'd like to ask Brian, come back up. He and I visited about this late yesterday. This was one of the questions I asked. So T is not one of the R zones that is named in the.
In the separation requirements.
In the separation requirements. So even though I think it's R1A can be constructed in T, it's not an R zone.
That's correct.
So that would allow the applicants to, to, basically to make both these projects work. That's the goal, is get them to both work. And are you and Mr. Holman comfortable with that?
Staff is.
I'm, I'm comfortable with it. I was a little, I'm never fond of having to go to zoning board of adjustment and ask for a variance because in our world, they can look at me square in the eye and say, well, you created this problem for yourself. This is a way through for us. And by the way, the eight acres had already been, has already been sold off. And so we, we have a new landowner who has his own property that he wants to do what he wants to do with. So we, it's not like we, it's, we own it all anymore. And so you have two separate landowners, two separate projects. I thought it was a very creative way to, to navigate through and we're very happy with it. If, hey, we get our building permit, that's, that's what we're after.
Okay. I just wanted to, I wanted to make certain, we had talked, we had talked about it yesterday. Mr. Weaver, just anything further? It's precedent, it's a bit precedent setting, I think. I think that's probably what your, was, was your question yesterday.
It was. I just think it's important the council realize that in a T, that does include a residential use under our code.
Yeah, okay, okay.
May I address that?
Please.
We have a precedent on the Expo Center. This is, you know, we started out C2, specific use for the big thing. And then you recall when we did that zoning, we said, well, we don't want this underlying commercial district occupying the whole eighty some odd acres. And so in that case, we, we, at your request, we brought it back to R1, which is the residential uses. So in, in this instance, I think it's a parallel circumstance.
Not exactly the same, but parallel.
But yes, yes.
Okay. I mean, I, we, we looked, that's one we looked at yesterday when we were trying to compare. Okay, thank you. All right. Counsel, any other, any other questions or comments? Ms. Joy?
I guess since it retains T, if he decides he wants to do something else, he's going to come back to planning and zoning anyway, if he wants to.
I'm stealing his thunder here a little bit. Yes, we're, the way it's set up, we're allowed to do anything residential or this golf course.
Okay.
Which for, for our perspective is probably better, ain't it?
Yeah, I think so.
And we have no plans to not do this golf course.
That's obvious.
You should have brought your clubs.
Counsel, any other, Ms. Joy?
I just have one more comment on eight five.
Okay.
The applicant was not at planning and zoning to, tell, tell, talk to us. Okay, are you really here? You just were hiding?
Yes, ma'am.
Don't do that.
I'm sorry. Joey Nelson, Duffland, serving 1310 Jarvis. I had full intentions to be here. My wife and two of my sons came down with COVID. She works in the medical field, so.
You're quarantined.
I was.
Was.
Was. I am not now.
Yeah.
And I, I will take the blame. I failed to mention it to my client, so I wasn't able to. They were, they had called me and never texted me the whole time I was out while P&amp;Z was going on. So I was trying to get them the information I could without actually being there.
Okay.
And I was unaware that it was six to two till later on.
Do you know of any, any other concerns that were raised that night other than just the fact that the.
That we weren't there.
Or a representative wasn't there?
Correct, yes, sir.
You were asking for C3.
Yes, ma'am.
I wondered if that was one of the questions, because you're changing from A2 to general retail district, C3.
I, I don't remember. I don't know. It was, if I remember correctly, it was C3 before and then it was rezoned to apartment and then we're trying to get it back to C3 and R2.
Okay. Brian, do you have that?
It should be.
Yeah, I just, Brian, can you find that?
I don't have a map. It should be, there might be some information on your staff reports. The first page would have the previous case.
No, where it's located is what I was looking for.
It's on page 590. Is that what you're, you're talking about, the history of it?
Well, and where it's located and this is it.
Nineteenth and Upland. And there's C4.
Okay, I see.
To the west, to the two corners on the west.
Yeah, it's, it's on the corner of Upland and Nineteenth. Okay, all right. Yeah, okay. All I was going to say is to applicants, they need to be, planning and zoning, they need to be here, so thank you.
And I, I wasn't aware of his circumstances, but, you know, we made sure and called everybody yesterday to make sure that they're here tonight.
Okay.
To be able to present or at least represent their cases.
Good.
All right, Counsel, anything else? Exciting, six, six, exciting projects. Okay, got a, a motion and a second to consider, to, to approve on first read, items eight one, eight two, eight three, eight four, eight five, and eight six. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that sign? That motion carries seven to zero. We'll now move to item eight seven. Item eight seven is on page 613. It's an item from planning regarding annexation. And I'll call Mr. Isom to give us a little background on this item.
This is item eight seven. It's an annexation of approximately 3.18 acres. I tried to highlight it, it's a very small parcel at the southeastern city limits of the city of Lubbock. This is the municipal service plan agreement that we're bringing forward. As you guys would recall, we've had quite a few annexations recently and this is the first piece of that puzzle that we bring to city council and the public hearings for the annexation itself follow. But again, this is an annexation of 3.18 acres out of section 10 block E for Ginnatra Holdings and Ginnatra Investments. This is adjacent to the southeastern city limits of the city of Lubbock, generally located south of 106th Street and east of University Avenue. That staff is available for questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Isom. Counsel, any, any questions or comments, or like, any questions for Mr. Isom? Start with that. Is this the, now remind me that the process, we'll start the public hearings next time on this. Is that, well, the next time it's in front of us.
Yeah, generally skips a meeting.
Right.
Between the municipal service plan and the public hearings.
But this is not the one that we considered, this is not related to the one that we considered from Tigress last time?
No.
It's just in the same neighborhood?
It's, it's just a little bit to the north of that one.
Okay, all right. Mr. Atkinson, how we're looking at it, I was trying to figure that out and, okay, that's what I thought. Okay. Any questions for Mr. Isom? Okay, Counsel, is there a motion to begin consideration of item eight seven?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Massengale, for the motion, second, for Mr. Griffith for that second. Counsel, is there discussion on this one? Mr. Atkinson, I guess staff is, is good with this?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Joy?
No.
Okay, okay, we got a motion on, got a motion and a second to approve item eight seven. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that same sign? Okay, that motion carries seven to zero. All right, we've got, next are two items from finance. They are two reports, annual reports from the Central Business District TIF and the Lubbock Business Park TIF. Good evening.
Good afternoon, Counsel and Mayor. My name is Jared Campbell. I am in the Financial Planning and Analysis Department.
Jared, we're glad you're here. Thank you. I probably should have effect, I should have recognized you. Mr. Atkinson, do you want to make a comment before we get started here?
Jared Keno Stolit, Mayor, Counsel, this is Jared Campbell. Jared's part of our finance group. He works with Ms. Brock. You would typically have her up here tonight. She's not able to be here, so Jared's going to take us through both of them. We're looking forward to it.
If you do us a favor and just walk through both of them, if you don't mind, and then we'll, the council can decide how we, can, can decide how we want to consider them, okay? Thanks, Jared.
Yes, sir. All right. The first up is the Central Business District TIF annual report. These annual reports are presented to all of the taxing jurisdictions as well as submitted to the state of Texas each year. The first slide that I have shows the taxable value of the Central Business District TIF, which is currently 240, 45.5 million, up about 13 million from last year and up significantly as you can see over the last 20 years from the base year of 105.9 million. Then on the revenue for fiscal, fiscal year 2021, the total property tax was just over 1.2 million and total revenue was almost 1.3 million. Onto the expenditure, the administrative expense is primarily administrative, staff time, those types of things, benefits, all of that. Professional services consists of the master development agreement, primitive social agreement, which is the website, board insurance, collection costs with LCAD. Then there's also the office supplies, mail handling, those types of expenses. The transfer to CIP consisted of funding for the Parks Master Plan, the historic district designation, the special projects, which is the police program, as well as the Civic Center Convention Hotel as well. And then the debt service was, of course, the 961,000, which was the vast majority of the 1.7 million expenditure for FY 2021. The fund balance for Central Business District TIF was 429,000 and cash on hand is about 84,000. Does anybody have any questions or concerns in this portion?
Questions on the Central Business, Central Business District TIF annual report? I want you to keep going there, please, Mr. Campbell.
For the fiscal year 2020, 21 year, the capital expenditures total of 51, just a little over 51,000 was spent in the police program. Almost 30,000 was spent in gateways and almost 38,000 was spent for the parking master plan, totaling 119,000 for this prior fiscal year. And then for this, this district, total current principal debt is currently at 10.3 million with just about 3 million in interest for a total of 13.3 million left in debt service for the Central Business District TIF. And then this is the boundary map for the TIF as well. As you can tell, it borders Avenue Q to the east and intersection 27 on the, I'm, I'm, sorry, 27 on the, on the east end, Avenue Q on the west and so forth. Does anybody have any questions? Sorry.
Any questions for Mr. Campbell on CBD TIF annual report?
The CBD TIF is what we commonly call the downtown TIF, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right.
Okay, let's move on to the Lubbock Business Park TIF. Is that the other one you have tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's do that one.
Yes, the only TIF that we are not covering tonight is going, is the North Everton TIF, which will be covered, I believe, the next council meeting. The Lubbock Business Park TIF is our newest TIF. It is a much smaller TIF in comparison to North Everton and the Central Business District TIF. Current taxable value is 64.9 million, up about 2.3 million from the prior year and still significantly up from the base year of about 400,000. On revenues, property tax came in at about 616,000. Total revenue came in at 619,000. Administrative costs, again, staff expense, benefits, all those types of things, can be met, just over 10,000. Office supplies at $657. Professional services was about $3,600, which consists primarily of board insurance. And then Lubbock Central Appraisal District, collection costs came in at $69, which is significantly less than that of our other TIFs because of its size. And total expenditure came to 14,494. Current fund balance is 671,000 or 672 roughly and, and cash on hand is 671,000. The only current capital project for Lubbock Business Park TIF is the Ivory Street Project. For fiscal year 2021, a total of two point, about 2.3 million dollars was expended and total expenditure to date was roughly 2.4 million. Total budget for that project is 3.3 million and is planning to come in under budget. under budget. And again, this is a boundary map of the Lubbock Business Park TIF, with some of the recent activity in that TIF.
Mm-hmm.
And, any questions?
Okay, questions for, questions for Mr. Campbell on the Business Park TIF annual Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate you being with us tonight.
Thank you.
Mr. Weaver, do we need to take these separately, or do you think it's okay? Okay. Counsel, you okay taking these together?
Yes.
Is there a motion to begin consideration of items eight eight and eight nine?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chides. Counsel, we've got in front of us a motion to approve the annual reports of the Central Business District TIF and the Lubbock Business Park TIF. Is there a discussion on these items? Okay, all those in favor of accepting these reports as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that very same sign? That motion carries seven to zero. Counsel, I believe our last item is eight ten. I think we made a decision earlier today to not take action on this. If there's no, if there's no opposition from counsel, we'll consider this item as pulled and not, and take no action on that. You okay with that, Mr. Weaver?
Yes, no objection.
Yeah, no objection. No objection? Okay. No objection to that. I think that then takes care of our business for this evening. Ms. Garza, is that okay? Everything good with you?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Weaver, you guys good? Okay. Okay, it's five fifty. The Lubbock City Council has concluded our business tonight. It's a great day in Lubbock, Texas, and we are adjourned.